Okay, so I'd like to open the meeting of the Select Board. It's October 28th, it is 6:02.
And we're gonna open up the Finance Committee on the same date.
And if I can just get a motion to waive reading the Zoom.
So moved.
In a second.
Leah.
Whiteman seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whiteman aye.
Okay. Good to go. So, we are, we're not doing any kinda... You're gonna do minutes?
We'll worry about that afterwards, it's more important to get this all done. If we have to wait for the minutes till next week, that's what we'll do.
Okay, then we'll go right into the warrant articles.
Do you want me to outline Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that'd probably be best, so we can...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna explain the first three articles all at the same time, because they're all pretty much the same. As you know, we have a financial policy that requires us to put 5% of free cash into the first three articles. The first three articles is money to put into the Stabilization Fund, the Capital Station, Capital Stabilization Fund and OPEB. So, all these three articles do is follow the motions required under our financial policy.
How much is free cash?
Well, it's not certified yet, but we know it's gonna be over $700,000.
Okay.
So, that's it, just so you know that when we go through this thing, all of these articles, we're gonna have funding for. And purposely not spending all the money that I expect in free cash, because, as you know, we do have budget situations that occur, and I'd prefer to be in a better financial position during budget time, knowing we have so many in free cash left over.
So, any discussion on the first three articles from the Finance Committee? So, the 5%, we're not gonna put numbers to this tonight.
No, that's in the motions document that is gonna deal with later, right? This is just for the articles, for the town meeting to place them. You do have a motions document that's with it, but we're not voting on a motion document tonight. But it's just so you know what the money we're talking about is. I don't expect them to change, but for instance, free cash, we don't have it in the motions document, because we don't have an exact number of free cash.
Leah, do you have any questions, or?
No, I think, I mean, there, these are the financial policy ones, so I think it makes sense to place them, so I have no questions on these, thank you.
Okay. If I can get a motion to place these articles?
You want to do one at a time, Mr. Chairman, or?
Um, that's up to whoever wants to make the motion. They probably, they probably should be read, so... So, if you can read them in the motions.
Leah, your line?
I'm just, they, they read the same.
Right.
Except for the, the words, stabilization.
Oh, I'm not reading that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that's the easiest way to do it.
I move that we would place Article 1, so the sponsor is the Finance Committee, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's stabilization fund, or take any action in relation thereto.
Okay, do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye?
I make a motion to add Article 2, sponsor is the Finance Committee.
Do you want us to do our favorable or unfavorable right as we place them?
Well, we're only, well, we're placing, that's up to you guys.
That's, that's what we've done in the past, we've done, you guys have placed it, we've done favorable, non-favorable, and then we move on to the next one, and that way we're done with the...
Yeah, so if you wanna make, yeah, make your recommendations, then the Select Board can make them on Monday.
Yeah.
Are you not gonna make your recommendations tonight? Because I, I have it set so you can both do your recommendations tonight. Finance Committee sponsoring articles, the recommendations will be first.
Yeah.
But then afterwards, you have the right to recommend.
Because this is the actual placement, so then, I guess, we would have to
You can go to place and recommend.
Go back and make a motion for recommendations on them.
It's Leah, I, sorry.
Yeah?
I have a question. Does the Select Board need to, I know we go back and forth on this, does the Select Board need to make recommendations? Because I thought generally, just by placing it, there's some level of the, the voters should have the opportunity to have a say on it, not necessarily an explicit yes or no. I know FinCom usually makes the recommendations, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I believe that we have, historically, that we, the Select Board always has made recommendations, because we may not all agree, or we may not, we're willing to place it, but not necessarily support it. So, I think it's important that the, the public know whether the Board, or the entire Board, supports the article.
Okay, I don't, I, yeah, I mean, I think in the past, it's been 50/50, depending on what the issues are, so I just wasn't sure, I don't have a strong preference either way, I just, you know, it, I know it's gone back and forth, for sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's two ways to do this. You can have one motion to place and recommend at the same time. The only question is, if it's not unanimous, then you're gonna have to separate the two votes.
Right.
So, it's up to you. Be quicker if you expect that it's gonna be unanimous thing, just to vote and recommend all in one, one motion.
And I'll leave that up to the person making the recommendations. So, we only did Article 1, so Karen, do you wanna have your board?
Okay.
I make a motion that we recommend favorably on Article 1 as read.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote Pete?
I'll be aye.
Okay, Tommy?
Rochella aye.
Alex?
Moa aye.
Winaka aye.
And Narwhal aye, okay.
All right, can I get a recommendation? Motion for recommendation?
I make a recommendation, a motion for recommending Article 1 as, as read by the Select Board.
Do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye. So, Article 2.
I make a motion that we place Article...
Hold on. You wanna, favorable, unfavorable on Article 2?
No, we haven't, we haven't placed it yet.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
No, I started to and...
No.
Sorry, I thought, I thought they did one and two, sorry.
I will for Article 1.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I will if you want me to.
It's gonna be a long night.
I make a motion to place Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's Capital Stabilization Fund, or take any action in relation thereto.
And do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye? Do you wanna do your recommendation, Karen?
I, I make a motion that we, the Finance Committee recommends favorably on Article 2 as read. Second.
Pete? Oh, any discussion, I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Yeah.
So, where, where this is, oh, this is, okay, stabilization...
This is Capital Stabilization.
Capital Stabilization. So, with that number being a little bit on the plus side, and we took some money out of Capital Stabilization, didn't we, last time? Is there any reason why we maybe shouldn't go a little more than 5%?
So, I would comment this way, if it's okay to you, ma'am chairman. I think for now, we can do 5%, later on, when we get the motions, we can talk about that. But right now, we're only voting on placing the article, we're not voting on the amounts tonight. That will become later with the motions.
Well, we are, because the...
We basically are.
We are, it's 5%.
Voting to be favorable?
Yes.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
So, I would say this, you're voting on the article as it's written right now. The dollar amounts are not being considered in the articles. So, you're right that I gave you motions that, that set up potential amounts of 5%. I think right now, the article says 5% of whatever free cash is. So...
That's what it says, and, and that's what our financial policy recommends. And I'm just saying, I'm agreement with this, and that we should do it. But I'm, my, I'm just to make a comment, is should we do a little more because of what we had to go through last, you know, the Annual Town Meeting last fall? Now, I understand, we can always add more if the next meeting did.
Well, that's what I think, I think you'd be better off to do it, when we get to the motions.
That's okay with me, I'm just brought it up that maybe we should put a little more oomph in that particular spot, because...
It's definitely something to consider, depending upon where you are. I, the only thing I wanna express, as I expressed at the beginning of this, is that I, I wanna be very careful that we don't use all of our free cash, because as you know, our budget situation is difficult. So, I wanna make sure there's free cash left to protect us. But, once we have an actual free cash number, I think we can make a better decision about that.
I think that right there, you're probably eighth in line, because there's several other people ahead of you saying the same thing.
So, based on $700,000, if we pass all of these with the amounts that you say, what will we have left over?
I, I think the number will be more than $700,000 first. I don't know yet, but I don't know, because we haven't gone through it all yet, and I don't know what you're gonna approve. But we're not spending, this, this process will not have us spend even the $700,000, so...
We could ask the calculator over here.
Don't worry, I'm doing, I'm doing it here.
Was 5% of $700,000?
Well, it's, it's $35,000, I think we're carrying...
It is.
I guess...
If we pass everything that's on here, what will we be left with? And in the past, we've always...
Oh, everything in the whole budget, or just these first three?
No, everything, on the whole warrant.
That's why I think we need to wait.
I'm sorry, yeah, I thought you were saying Article 5 is free cash.
So, we have extra free cash money, we feel we wanna add some money to those art, those issues, we can do that. But I think we just do that when we know where we're at, that's it.
Any other discussion? Okay, Pete? Okay, Tommy?
Rochella aye.
Aye. Moa aye.
Winaka aye.
Narwhal aye, okay.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article 2 as read.
Do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye?
I make a motion that we put Article 3 to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free, free cash to the town's OPEB Trust Fund, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, does everybody understand what OPEB is?
No.
Okay, so let me explain that, just so people know what it is. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's essentially the health insurance for retired employees. When people retire, we still pick up, you know, a part of their health benefits. That fund is, is never funded to the full amount, so we're trying to make up past underfundedness as part of these contributions. So, we pay the current cost, but the states requiring us or asking us to pay extra money to sort of catch up from that unfunded liability. So that we fully fund, like you would a pension, you fully fund a pension, they want us to fully fund those medical benefits as well, so that's what OPEB is.
Yeah, roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye?
Tommy?
It's on this replacement, so...
Tommy?
I make a motion that we, the Finance Committee recommends favorably on Article 3 as read. Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Pete? Okay. Tommy?
Put that money in there. Rochella aye.
Moa aye.
Winaka aye.
Narwhal aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably on Article 3.
And do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye?
I make a motion that we place Article 4 to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from free cash to be used as an additional funding source for the FY 2022 operating budget approved under Article 4 of the June 5, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, as may be necessary, or take any action in relation thereto.
And do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just so that people understand what this is, is if you remember the Annual Town Meeting, we all agreed that we'd use a certain amount of free cash to fund the operating budget. But we, it turns out, we failed, but we voted for the budget, we failed to have a separate motion to take that free cash and spend it to balance the budget. So, this motion allows us to do that. And what we approved last year on the budget when we did this was using $76,736 of free cash as part of our budget process. So, this just confirms what we did at the Annual Town Meeting.
76,736?
76, it's in your motions document, but yeah, 7, 70... 70... What did you say? 76,736.
76, yep.
Any other discussion? Uh, roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye?
Oh, you're all set, okay. I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommends favorably on Article 4 as read. Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick, is there any reason why the amount is not specifically in there?
So, in, in all of your articles, you never put the amount in the articles document. It's done in the motions document, and different people will make the motions with the amount in it at the time of the town meeting. Because we know those numbers probably will change as we go through the course, so that's why it's done that way. But I just announced what we expect that number to be, that number should not change.
Any other discussion? Pete?
I'll be aye.
Rochella aye.
Moa aye.
Winaka aye.
Narwhal aye.
Motion.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommend favorably Article 4 as read.
Do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid aye.
Whiteman aye.
And Nichols aye? Okay.
I make a motion that we place Article 5 to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from free cash for the purpose of funding COLA raises for non-union, non-contracted employees for the fiscal year 2022, as well as holiday pay for the non-union police chief consistent with the town's contractual obligations, or take any action in relation thereto.
And do we have a second?
Whiteman seconds.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, so, there's been a lot of discussion at the Annual Town Meeting about this particular motion. There was a gentleman who made a motion to try to add money at town meeting to fund non-union employees. As you recall, all the union members, all the contractual employees all got COLA raises, but the one group of people who didn't get it was, the non-union workers didn't get it. There was a lot of feeling from a lot of people that that was unfair at the time, but we did it because we had very big budget cuts at the time to deal with, and we felt we would reexamine this issue at the special town meeting, depending upon free cash. This article funds, this, this article is designed to fund non-union, non-contractual raises of 2% for all employees. There's an option that we're gonna have to discuss about this, we don't really have to make the final decision tonight, but we're gonna have to make the decision prior to the town meeting. There's two choices I gave you in the motions document, just so you're aware of it. To approve $15,5471, or $13,827.57. The reason for that is the town, years ago, set up a company who came in and evaluated all the, the value of each and every position in town for all the non-union employers. And that's a, a compensation schedule, or matrix, it's set up for all employees, non-union employees. And, over time, and I can't explain to you the reasons, but two employees were never funded the schedule of what the payment should be on that, that compensation schedule. So, the whole schedule is right for all employees, except these two employees who, in my mind, didn't get paid what they were supposed to get paid, as a result of that study. I'm not gonna talk about the, the names of the people, but it's two positions, the clerk's position and the town planner's position. You'll see the difference between the $13,827 and the $15,554 is giving them the added money to put them on the compensation schedule, as, as everybody else. So, it basically puts their pays at what they're supposed to be according to the plan that the town divided. So, later, again, we don't have to do this tonight, but we are gonna have to make a decision to either give them the money and put them on the compensation, like all other employees, or to not give them that money, and that will result in the COLA of $13,827. Now, this whole putting together the chart you got was extremely complicated. And Becky has been working on it for weeks, because when we did the annual budget last time, we had cut positions, remember, and then we put them back in and everything else. Well, some budgets, we funded the 2% COLAs, and in other budget positions, we didn't fund the positions in. So, Becky had to literally go through every position in every budget to see if it was funded correctly with the 2% or without the 2%. So, a number of positions here were, the money was already in the budget, so we didn't have to put money more in the budget to fix that. This $13,000 or $15,000, $15,000 only represents those positions that, that 2% wasn't budgeted for. So, that's, that's why it was more complicated. Now, Becky did this, normally what happens is, when we get our salary lines, we get them from each specific department, tells us the increase and everything else. But because we didn't do it that way here, Becky had to go through and look at every salary and everything, and restructure, and put together this chart. So, those are the decisions. I guess the main decision is, do you wanna give the non-union people the 2% COLA that everybody else got? And the second question is, do you want to fix those two salaries on the compensation schedule and put them with every other employee, put them on the schedule? The third issue on this particular thing is the police chief. During budget time, his budget was taking significant cuts, and one of the things was...
No, 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 no. The cuts were not made by us. He chose to make that cut.
But his department was taking cuts, and he made a decision to cut a benefit that he would've got in contractually, holiday pay. He would've got it that by contract, he would've got that. But he made the point to try to save an employee that we were talking about cutting, to give up his holiday pay. The chief is now, and, and again, he said to me with the hopes of that when free cash comes around, I can get it back, that we can make up for that. But that other sum of money, it's, I think, $3,000, let me just look at the exact number.
$3,966.
Yeah, $3,966 is to give him the holiday pay that is contractually required, although, to be fair, he did offer to kind of give that up to keep his secretary and not lose her. So, that's the other third decision that has to be made in this, if we want to allow him to get the money he was contractually obligated to.
Is that number in the 15, or is it not in the 15?
It's, it's...
It's in the 15.
Is it in the 15? I don't remember.
It says here, it would be...
I don't think it is in the 15. Is it in the 15? Yeah, it's, actually, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the 15. If you see it, you'll see it's in orange.
How come the spreadsheet that we received says 26,635,37?
It says 39,669.
The spreadsheet that we received.
This is the same spreadsheet I thought you had, so I don't know what you're...
This is the spreadsheet that we received back on...
This is the newest...
927.
Oh, this, oh, that's the older spreadsheet, this is the newer spreadsheet you got recently, more recently. You're looking at the old one, it was originally when she started it, but...
Did we get an actual Excel spreadsheet?
Yes, you did.
Do you happen to know one?
You got it. It, it's part of this document, it's actually in your package, you have it.
Yeah, but it's, it's...
I think she sent it electronically before that, a few days ago.
This isn't, this isn't an Excel spreadsheet, it's a PDF when we got it.
Oh, Becky...
Alex, would you read it on this one?
Yeah.
So, I know Becky sent you a document just a couple of days ago, I don't know if it came in Excel or not. But if you got a document from Becky just a couple of days ago, you'd have to look into if it's in Excel or not. But if you want it in Excel, I can give it to you, she's on vacation this week, but we'll get you an Excel.
We're gonna need this for the budget this year, just so you know.
For the next year's budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Of course. I, I mean, we're gonna have to adjust, whatever we do here, we're gonna have to adjust for the next year's budget, so yes, absolutely. That's why it's, that's why it's good Becky's doing this, because we're gonna have to redo it in the budget issue.
I guess, so Alex just pointed out where that number comes from, but is these COLAs, the, all these numbers, some have yellow highlighting, and some has an orange highlighting, and so...
The only one that's orange is Nick's.
Right, but I'm just saying, you're sure then that this column adds down to that number?
Yeah, the, the first column adds down, $15,000 includes everything in that column, all the numbers in that column. The $13,000 is net of those two numbers that are for the town clerk and the town planner.
Okay, yep, thank you.
So, I, I need some clarification, Ron, on, on the two that you're talking about. Those weren't COLAs, right? Were those COLAs?
No, no, they are...
Then how does that fit into this article? Because it mentions COLAs and the, and the police chief exactly.
So, we would, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman, we would have to amend the article to allow for those two employees to, to be put on the same classification schedule as all other employees. That, that this money, we would just say, just like we did the police chief at the end of the article, we would have to say, the town clerk and the town planner would also get, I don't know if you wanna call it a raise, additional income as a result of the compensation schedule.
Adjusted, adjusted to the compensation.
Adjusted to the compensation schedule, yes. We'd have to add that to the motion, if you wanted to do that. And I had no clue what you were gonna do with it, so that, that's why I didn't, I wrote it in the most easy way, I guess, until we figured out what we wanted to do.
Okay, so, Carol and Leah, so you made, you made the motion already. So, is that something that you guys wanna consider amending the motion, or how, how do we feel?
I still have questions about this sheet. So, the, the fourth column from the right is 2% additional needed, and we have some negative numbers along with positive numbers, and I guess I would...
Yeah, that means that the budget, that means that the budget was over-budgeted in those areas. For some reason, there was more money in the salary line than was supposed to be there.
Well, didn't it say some had the increase already, and some didn't, so it probably had to be some kind of...
But some had more than the increase.
Okay, so there had, is some balancing?
Some were budgeted wrong, right.
So, it's only budgeted wrong, not...
No, it was budgeted, budgeted wrong.
Promised wrong.
So, the more money was put into that line, and it should've been put into the line. And, and truthfully, I mean, we went through some craziness as we were doing different, very variations. Oh, I know what they, actually, there wasn't more money in that way. Stipends at the time were put into those lines, and we didn't end up doing any stipends, that's what that was. The, and I'm sorry, steps, not stipends. That's the step money. Remember, we, they put in those salary lines, step money, we had to take that step money back out, because steps are not being fixed there. That's something we gotta consider at the Annual Town Meeting, if we want to do anything with the steps. So, the, the amendment would say, if you want to go forward with the amendment, it would say... Let me just get back to my article here. At the end of the, at the end of the article, let's say, this article also includes additional compensation to add the police chief and town planner to the compensation schedule.
And not the police chief, who's already in...
I'm sorry, town, town clerk and, and town planner to the compensation schedule.
I think they called it compensation matrix.
It's Leah.
Yeah, go ahead, Leah.
I, I would support the amendment, I mean, I think that we need to make a very conscious and dedicated effort to get our employees to where they should be. Um, and I think, Ron, you addressed the steps, that if anything were to happen with steps, that would have to be at annual, or would be at annual. Um, but I feel like after this, I would like to have that conversation also, but I would support getting, um, the town clerk and the town planner to where they should be based on the matrix, so we don't continue to constantly fall behind, um, with more and more employees.
Do, do we have a figure on what it would cost to do the steps?
No. Becky was having a hard enough time doing this, she didn't get into the step part, the step down. This was a very complicated process, and matter of fact, we, we, we still struggle with Tamika and how she plays out in this role, because you got all these administrative accounts and stuff that are making it even more confusing, because she's paid out of a whole bunch of different buckets, so it, it really was tricky to figure out.
And then we had to figure out who was already budgeted for and it was a lot of work on Becky just to figure that all out. So we decided that we're gonna deal with that issue for the annual town meeting if the board is seconding or not, so still look at that issue. You know Leah is interested in it, so, but that is our next step.
Well, I think we should at least be looking at the numbers and see what it costs.
Well, that's what we're gonna do, pal.
Um, so you made the motion, Carol.
Yeah, I need to figure out what, what the adding is.
Just say as amended, no.
Yeah, I mean, I can read it. I mean, I, she's got the language. Tamika got it. Tamika's got the language.
So you, you can just amend your motion as...
I'm going to amend my motion as amended.
Let's describe.
Let's describe.
One thing while we're talking about, you, you mentioned the steps. Now, haven't the steps not been done for several years?
Well, I think that's why it's so complicated to figure it out.
No, I understand. But that means that they've been going backwards for several years. Where other ones, the other ones have all, they've met whatever they've been contracted for.
Some employees, yeah. The problem is, it's complicated because some employees got the maximum of steps for the life of the step process and then others didn't. So we have to go back and evaluate who missed steps and some missed steps years ago that they should have got the step years ago. So we have to evaluate it all and figure out how we make those people whole, not backwards, but at least forwards. You follow what I'm saying? If you did a step 10 years ago, your salary's been decreased for 10 years. So we can give you the step now, it helps you forward, but not backwards.
I know the feeling, it's okay.
So that's, you know, that's a conversation.
She was saying, yes, or just...
Another issue for another day, but it's a big issue.
No, it's something we do need to discuss. So we've got an amendment, Leah. Are you, do you, all right with seconding? As amended?
Yeah, I, I support my second with the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, and our roll call?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye.
Okay.
So that was placed in the article?
Yes.
I make a motion that the finance committee recommend favorably on Article Five as written with the amendment at that higher number.
Any discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna be the bad guy. Nick decided to give up his, his holiday rate as other departments chose to cut other things. We're not going to make anybody else whole that I saw through here for what they did. So why are we, I'm not saying he's not very important to the town, that's not it. But there were other department heads who chose to make cuts to save potential layoffs. So we're not making them whole, so why are we choosing only this one?
So let me answer first this way. No other departments took cuts to their personal salaries to save an employee. They cut other areas in their budget, so they didn't, they might have lost something else in their budget, but this is the only one that deals with the salary issue. But it, you know, but, but, you know, this was a decision the chief said, so, I mean, it's really up to the board. The, the chief, and you'll see here, for instance, one of the things that was cut, and we're gonna talk about the article later, is a lease for our payment, a lease payment. He was gonna take it out of a different account, a gift account, and he's asking to put it back in. So you're correct, and a couple of other departments have asked to put some things back in too. But, but, you know, I'm not gonna lie, and the chief is here, he can say what he wants. The chief did say he would do that, but he did it out of the goodness of his heart to help another employee. And I don't have a problem with giving him the money back because it's a personal thing that, it's not, I gave up buying something else in the department. This is, you know, something he did out of his own personal thing. But that's, it's a deal.
So just to clarify, he was the only one, it was the only salary change? Everything else was operational, is what you're saying?
Correct, and all other departments, correct.
I know DPW made a lot of big cuts to help hurt them.
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
Um, I mean, there's some precedents here. We had Gary in the past offered to make cuts to save his, his staff. We had Becky offer to make cuts to save her staff. We had Margaret take cuts to save the budget. And we did make them all whole in the past. So there is some, some precedents that has been set here when it comes to the taking personal salaries to try to keep support staff. So I think we should keep that in mind.
I just want to make sure everybody in the public realizes that it was not a cut that was made. It was a cut that was volunteered by the department manager.
Yep, there's no argument with that. So you have a motion on the table. I don't want any more discussion about it.
Yeah, and nobody else is gonna say anything? Okay. Pete.
Tommy.
Rochella, aye.
What would I?
Winica, aye.
Nora Walden, aye.
Okay, just for the record, so when you see your motion document, I'm gonna change the motion document to eliminate 13, 8, 27, 57. The number's gonna be at 15, 50, 471 based upon the discussion we just had. Okay.
I make a motion that we, that the select board recommend favorably on Article Five.
As amended.
As amended.
And do we have a second?
Wait a sec.
Any discussion? Roll call? Oh, did we lose Leah?
Nope.
She's here, she's... I'm back. Wait a second.
No, aye or, or nay.
Seconds.
Whatever you choose.
Tamika, just make me a side of the bill which you may let me, just so I can do, fix it.
So we have Carol, aye. And you muted again. Still muted.
Sorry, can you repeat what you said?
So we're voting on it for approval. So Carol said aye, it's to you.
Yep, Whitman, aye.
Okay, and Nichols, aye. Thank you.
I'm gonna need a break.
You've got a long way to go, yeah.
Um, I make a motion that we place Article Six to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from free cash for the purpose of funding town costs as they relate to the town's 300th anniversary celebrations or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Wait a seconds, and I have a question on this one.
Okay.
Is this in, separate from the citizen's petition, Ron?
Okay, so that, thank you for Leah for asking that question because that would have been part of my explanation anyway. So, you know, prior to the citizen petition coming in, this is something that I was considering. I know some select board members had considered this as well because I think a lot of us believe that we want to have a very successful 300th anniversary celebration and it is unique in that respect. In the past, the town in the 250th anniversary actually gave $25,000 towards town funds for that celebration. I looked at this from a town perspective of what the town costs would be. Things like, you know, police private duty, fire duty, DPW work, that we had all cut a lot of those services in our annual budget. So at least for this event, we want to make sure that we can provide those town services for that event. That's my $30,000 number. The petition then came in with a much larger number that attempts to do a lot of things that quite frankly, I think are over and beyond the scope of the 300th anniversary celebration. It fixes a park and a playground and does some other things. One of the things they later add that's different, and we gotta debate this when we get to that article, I, and frankly, I'm gonna just say, and I'm gonna recommend that we don't vote to support it. And I think the 30 grand gets us where we mostly want to be. But I did also send a letter to our state senator and state rep asking if they could get some funds through state dollars to be more purpose towards helping them do events and things for that day. Not like police detail, but actually, you know, creating events and things, activities for that day. So this is, I think, a more reasonable request than the petitioning request. It deals strictly with making sure that the town can fund the things it needs to fund for that day, but it doesn't get into just giving money for activities or events or anything like that. So the, the problem is I have no control over the petitioning documents. So we're vote, if we vote the 30 to recommend, depends what town meeting does on this petition. They could, they could change it to give the difference. They could try to vote the holiday grant. I don't know what they're gonna do. That's up to them. I do know that the chairman of 300th Anniversary Committee suggested that they would be amenable to changing that depending upon what the town said. But I, I can't speak to the petitioners. It's really up to them what they want to do. I think 30 grand is a reasonable amount. I think we have the free cash to do it. I think for 300th anniversary, it's worth it. It reflects pretty much what we did for the 20, 250th anniversary. So I think that's more reasonable than the request that's being made under the petition. And I think it also shows good faith that the board of selectmen and the finance board are doing everything they can to support that particular event, which I think is a good community kind of event, so.
Sheila?
No, sorry.
Oh, Sheila here?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak. I really appreciate that this was even brought up as a, as an article that would be discussed at that table rather than a resident petition. Obviously, when we submitted the petition, we didn't know what was going to happen. We didn't know the free cash number. I do want to state for the record, and an email was sent to, I think, most of you at the table in advance of this, that we believe this number to be a solid number to protect the town from liability issues. The town administrator did mention the DPW costs. I don't want to put Joe on the spot tonight, but we talked to our department heads and asked for the numbers that they would need in order to support the events that typically already happen safely. And one of the reasons we use the word liability in our petition is because we believe that to actually be a situation that we need to address. If anybody was at the food truck festival, you would have seen the very large amount of kids that were playing on a town-owned playground that has really not had the funds to take care of it. If a child gets hurt, if somebody gets hurt crossing a street because it's too dark that night. We have a lot of ifs that we don't want to put the town in a situation where they are going to entertain liability because of the very large crowds that we expect at some of our events this coming year, particularly having not done 4th of July for two years. Particularly having the attention that's being placed on Rutland's Tricentennial. So then 40,000 number, it's only 38, came directly from the police chief. He felt that that was the number that he would need in order to ensure that the details needed for multiple events, which we talked about multiple dates, would able, would be able to be enacted. We also talked to the fire chief, who said at that point that he didn't believe there would be anything additional needed in his budget that would not allow, you know, that would allow him to do more than what they would expect for a typical celebration year. With DPW, it was infrastructure, it was caring for that playground, it was caring for things like extra barriers that they may need to block off streets. I guess I would offer this, and I agree with the town administrator. We are certainly hoping for state funds to come through. There is a precedent in history of the state budget or the state supplemental coming through with something near $50,000 for big celebration years like this for other towns. That said, we are behind the eight ball. We are talking to other communities that are in the process of planning and they're ahead of us. And we're gonna have to blame COVID for this. So for example, Berry is already seeing monies that are being set aside for them. The town of North Bridge, their representative was able to get them a $25,000 earmark in the state budget under travel and tourism, and this one in last budget cycle. We just weren't there. We don't have that money. What I would ask is if you, and we all know how town meetings go, and as you get to the end of the articles, everybody's getting tired. It would be great to not have to fight about two articles asking for the same thing. However, the town administrator is correct. If the $30,000 passes, I think the committee would be responsible in having a conversation about amending our article, which actually does have the number in it, which means we would have to present our article and then amend it on the floor. I would also suggest, and it was in my email, that if everything good happened, so if next year's budget cycle was able to make our departments whole and they were able to absorb the indirect costs that they always used to for, say, 4th of July, this is money that does not have to be spent and could be returned to the town. But having it here as an article as a possibility, because by the time next May rolls around, it's gonna be too late to know whether or not we're ready. We won't be able to get a special article at that point, most likely. This is our safety net money. We think the number is a good number. That said, again, we appreciate their having this conversation at all.
So to, and to you, Mr. Chairman, to, to the chair of the 300th Anniversary Committee, I'm not against, you know, some of these things, for instance, she put in, I look at the park, the playground, is we should put that in our budget to fix the park. If there's needs to fix the park and playground, it shouldn't be for the 300th anniversary, we should fix the park and playground and make that decision as part of our annual budget. So I didn't really take that into account that she, that she talked about. And frankly, I'm not aware that there's major problems with that park. And I guess I'd ask Joe later to define if there's real safety issues with that park. Because if there is, we need to deal with them right away, not wait for the 300th anniversary.
He told us flat out during budget season that if a swing gets broken, it's gonna be tied up. It's not gonna be left hanging because he won't have the time or he won't...
The park right now is fully functional, I think, but that's an annual budget discussion, sure.
That's separate. What I said at the time during the budget hearing was that we will not fund any parks or recreations repairs, any buildings and ground maintenance repairs. What I believe the town administrator is talking about is a capital item. So we currently don't fix, we don't maintain parks, we don't maintain the playgrounds. And what I implied during the budget meeting was, because we don't fund that, if something breaks, I take it down.
Exactly.
The big, the difference about, for this event though, is at the same time, the playground should be inspected annually and, and updates made accordingly to protect youth in general. Whether that's a public works purview, I, I can't speak to that per se. But I think the two arguments are separate, your O and M versus capital.
So I'm not against, you know, right now, I don't recommend the 80 grand because, first of all, we've got 30 in there. Second of all, I want to see if the state comes through with some money. So I'm not against later on, before the town meeting, if something changes to, to work with the 300th Anniversary Committee to suggest some kind of amendment. I, I don't know what it will be at. So, you know, in, in the letter that she sent me, to be totally clear, and I think I said it, is that she even said in that letter she was amenable to potential changes. So, so this is not, this is not closing a door to her, to her article, except it clearly would lower it by 30 grand, definitely. I think there's some other things that we don't need to, I think we could deal, the chief's 38, we can work with him. Again, I don't know how many events we're gonna end up with that need duty work. Because a lot of events shouldn't need private duty work, but some will, I, so, so there's a lot to be determined still on, on that. And I think we can work with the 300th Anniversary Committee to do the best we can to make sure that any event that needs private duty is there, you know? But we're not gonna send private duty if there's no requirement for private duty. It's gotta be, meet that standard, so to speak. The police chief determines that, so.
Leah, did you have a comment? Or a question?
No, I think, I mean, that, I wanted to hear the conversation. I appreciate it. And I think the, the town has the means to do the, the free cash. So I think it's really important that this town support. We didn't support it in the budget because we didn't have that. So I support it. I just was curious how the conversations were going in relation to this with the citizen's petition. So, thank you.
So I guess I would change my comment to say this, that instead of saying, again, it's not my position to have a recommendation or not a recommendation on this. But I guess I, my original thought was to tell the board of selectmen and finance committee not to recommend the, the citizen article. But I think I would rather say, take no position on it until we know what it, what it is. Then we can decide then if we should support it. I support it once we have more information. So I would say, when we get to the, and then we're, again, we're going way ahead of where we are, but to not make any recommendations until we know what the numbers are. So that's our article.
We're still on placing the article?
Right. Well, the first one's a 30,000 that we should place.
I just, a comment. I know when the DPW was formed, umpteen years ago, the parks commissioners were eliminated. So that duty and those responsibilities went to the DPW, so.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. The last two of the budget cycle. Every, every budget cycle since I've been here, if you look at the line item budget for parks and recreations and grounds, it's zero.
I disagree with you, but the responsibility is still there.
Yep. We don't fund the responsibility. As a town, we vote not to respond to the responsibility.
That could be, but this responsibility is still there if something has to be done.
So then, some, the town...
Well, I don't, if it's part of that, whether it's in your job description or if it's part of the responsibilities...
But you don't fund it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we agree. So anyway, I think the article is specific to the 30,000 right now.
So I just, just case in point, so even though it falls as a DPW responsibility, I'm gonna put other things in front of it, like fixing a pothole or making sure that people have clean water. That's gonna come first.
Yeah, we're getting way off the topic.
And we're not voting on the dollar amount, frankly, tonight. I put the dollar amount, give you my suggestion. But we are not voting on a dollar amount in this, in this article.
Leah, do you have any other comments or questions?
Nope, that's good. Thank you.
Carol, you all set?
All set.
Okay, if we can get a roll call, replacement?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Now, it's up to you guys to debate it.
I make a motion that the finance committee vote favorably on the, on Article Six as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Pete.
Billy, aye.
He's good. Oh, he's already saying aye.
Rochella, aye.
What would I?
Winica, aye.
Nora Walden.
I make a motion that the select board recommends favorably on Article Six.
And do we have a second?
Wait a second.
Roll call?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. All right. All the way to seven.
I want a second page, Mom. I make a recommendation that we place Article Seven to see if the town will vote to transfer money, some of money from free cash to be added to the appropriation made under Article Four of the June 5, 2021 Annual Town Meeting for Snow and Ice to defray costs to be incurred performing snow plowing on unimproved private gravel roads in Rutland for the 2021, 2022 winter or take any action in relation hereto.
And do we have a second?
Wait a second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the town has an option on these gravel roads if it chooses to pave it or not.
Oh, plow it. We're definitely not choosing to pave it.
Plow it. To plow it or not. And one of the things...
And one of the things that Joe put in his impact statement as a result of cuts to the budget, that this is one of the cuts that he would have to make. Now, I understand why he did it, and I supported him doing it, because you have to set priorities in the department, and this is, wasn't an absolute priority. However, on the other side of this issue is, there's children who live on these roads, and we have school buses that go on these roads. So I think people have to wake up to realize that we have to pay in our annual budget for this service. You can't take it out of the budget. We have to recognize there's a cost to the DPW. We just can't keep cutting our budget so that they have to even consider making these kind of cuts. But I don't know how you don't fund this, because if you don't, parents are gonna come and beat you. Well, and I really agree with a lot of.
I mean, we're beating a dead horse here, but there was no money. We did the best we could.
So, right, but all I'm saying is that I think we have to go forward. We have free cash. We'll fund it for this year. And truthfully, it's probably something I'm gonna try to work into the budget next year so that we're not going through this process. But I think, we're not gonna be tricked. We can't not plow the roads when children go to school.
Private gravel roads.
These are the trails.
So does this mean we do not get Chapter Ninety monies for these?
No, we do not.
We do not get Chapter Ninety? So these are private?
Gravel roads.
Gravel roads.
They're owned by private citizens?
Yep.
Who should be responsible for plowing their own driveway and road?
I'm gonna sign up for, I'll take off my paving, and you can do my driveway, that's right.
So let me, no, so let me comment here, because this is, this is not just Rutland. This is everywhere in the state. And so, and particularly is more prevalent when you're, it's around a pond or a lake. Because people buy these summer houses, they want the roads to be, you know, gravel and not be a private. And eventually the towns go from being summer homes to, you know, they turn into all-year-round homes. And this is a big problem. So towns all across the state are paying for these costs to maintain these roads and to plow these roads. So we're not the least bit unique. Here, I find it strange because there's no lakes in these roads. And the problem with these roads is that the planning commission has approved significant developments on these roads.
Well, no, not, sorry, I'm sorry to.
Go ahead.
No, these roads don't have development. No, these are separate. This is mostly cool sandy.
Yeah, different, so they're near lake areas.
I thought, this is, so this is some of the beach roads. But this doesn't count the roads that we looked at for the buses?
No, those are public gravel roads. We actually do.
Okay, I apologize. So these are the wood roads.
There are some big houses in those places.
I was actually thinking that gravel public roads where a sea blare and stuff, building a lot of problems.
Sorry for the interruption. Just wanted to be clear.
We're going back to my initial thing. These are houses where they converted from summer homes to year-round homes. Because of lakes.
I just wanna make sure everybody had clear in the statement.
I'm sorry, Joe, I was confusing the two.
I guess the one concern I have is I want it to be very clear, the ones that have historically been plowed. I don't want people all of a sudden to come up with these dirt roads that were created in the last year or so. But is that, that's not very specific in this. It says.
This is the historical roads that we.
But where does it say that? It just says unimproved private gravel roads.
It's, Joe, I think you probably have a list of these roads, don't you? It's something that had to be approved.
But this article doesn't specify that list.
But I think these are already voted on by Board of Selectmen, because usually a Board of Selectmen has to vote to approve the plowing of these roads at some point. Is that a list you gave to the Board of Selectmen years ago, or they?
That predates me.
Usually the Board of Selectmen vote to do these.
Yeah, Leah, go ahead.
So, this actually just came up. I remember early when I was on the board, I think Gary was still here. We got a list of private roads and private ways in town and made a, um, I would need to go back and check, and if Sheila's still there, I don't know if she remembers. I thought we had made some comments about not continuing to, to work on private, private roads and private ways. I think that there may have been a few that we grandfathered in because they had always been done. But I think we definitely made a conscious effort to not take on new. And I thought that there was some discussion, I don't remember if there was a vote or anything, about not continuing to take care of those. So I can go back through my notes and everything, but I think it was when Gary was still here, my first year on the board, that we had this conversation.
The typical historical way that.
I'm just gonna let Tom hear what he's been meaning.
Yeah, and it's been talked about quite a bit, but there's also a town meeting vote about, I'm not sure exactly what it says, but there's a town meeting vote to plow unaccepted roads, or whatever the right word is.
Actually, we did some research. It goes back to, the town passed the law in nineteen sixty-five, they had to take a vote. Actually, the Board of Selectmen can make that vote, separate and distinct from the town meeting, whether to plow them or not. When it came down to time to do the budget, we were faced with what can we cut and what can we not cut? And this was put on the chopping block, and the purpose behind the article is to follow through with what we said we'd do with the town, time of budget.
Right, and I understand that, and I agree with that, but I just wanna make sure, all of a sudden, these new roads, like Leah was saying, that were taking on new roads that we had not historically plowed in the past, and somebody can all of a sudden come in and say, look, I have a gravel private road. The town needs, they said that they would plow it, then they need to plow it.
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that that's not the way it works. So the only roads we're talking about, ones that were, initially happened, because it happens in every town, they're private, they're, in the past, they were passed, voted on by the Board of Selectmen to allow plowing of these roads.
But it doesn't specify that in the article.
But that's, we're not adding any new roads. It's existing roads that have not done that. If you wanna put in the amendment, existing roads that were plowed in the past or something.
I want something in there to make sure that it's only.
You wanna qualify it a little bit, yeah.
Absolutely, so that we're not getting new roads added on.
But they can't, they wouldn't be able to add a new road unless they came to the Board of Selectmen for approval anyway. So in order to get.
That doesn't sound like it to me in this.
But you, but the DPW couldn't plow the road, even if it wanted to, without the Board of Selectmen giving authority to plow that road.
This article gives them authority to plow any private gravel road.
Yes.
So can you say private gravel in existence as a life?
I, I wanna qualify it.
Can we relist them all, the old roads?
Well, we have an approved list from when Leah said, I think if we go back to that and say, as previously approved by.
And filed with the DPW. So I want some clarification in this to make sure that.
So put in, let me just think about a minute, how to amend this, right? So it'd be.
You could have every builder that's building right now tell you to plow their roads.
Well, then try.
Well, they can.
That's what I was gonna say. I was like, I'd be very happy.
Yeah. That's what they've been doing.
How about an improved private gravel roads, already defined by the DPW director in Rutland for twenty-twenty-one? So that gives you the defined list that you already have.
I would say, handout, we need a list of what it is.
Somehow mention the list kept with the DPW.
That's what I was saying, yeah. The ones previously, the previously approved list.
But I think we should have the list there.
Well, we need your list there for the meeting, yeah.
Because there's going to be somebody that's gonna say, is my road one that gets plowed?
Or unimproved private driveway in a list already established in the DPW department.
Just for those watching at home, per policy, we currently plow those at the end of the storm.
Right.
They're not plowed throughout the storm. They're only plowed at the end. And all the funding is meant to help continue plowing them at the end.
So this was your motion, Carol, are you good with the amendment?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we amend as described, as discussed.
Do you have that?
She has the language.
Yeah.
Thank God for you.
So are you okay with the amendment, Leah?
Yeah, I'll amend my second to match the amended motion.
Okay, roll call.
Benoid eye.
Whitman eye.
And nickel's eye.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommends favorably on Article Seven as written with the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Pete? Okay.
Rochella eye.
Ola.
Winaka eye.
Narwhal eye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably on Article Seven as written and amended.
Do we have second?
Whitman seconds.
And roll call.
Benoid eye.
Whitman eye.
And nickel's eye.
I make a motion that we place Article Eight to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from free cash for the purchase, installation, and programming of a new school zone light to be installed on Main Street westbound to replace existing outdated, poorly visible light, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action in relation heretofu, thereto.
Do we have a second?
Whitman, Whitman seconds. I have a quick question about this, sorry. Is this, is the installation, I didn't look tonight, is the installation of this mindful of the TIP project and just that it may need to be relocated? I don't know how it is in relation to the Puma-Gusset intersection, or what TIP's gonna do to it.
It's fine. It's not, the TIP job shouldn't affect it.
Joe said that the TIP job shouldn't affect that.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that if it was going to be, it could be moved if necessary, or whatever, so.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Benoid eye.
Whitman eye.
And nickel's eye.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend favorably on Article Eight as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Joe, this is under the thirty-five thousand, or whatever it is, that we have to, the school won't pitch in any of this?
So it's nothing new to the school?
No, it's a traffic signal.
I was just kinda hoping that we'd get something from, doesn't hurt to ask.
No, it's a traffic signal.
Okay. Doesn't hurt to ask.
It's for the schools, but.
It's for the children.
For the children.
Safety.
Any other discussion?
I'll have to support, assign for the kids.
Okay, Pete? Okay, Tommy.
Rochella eye. Ola.
Winaka eye.
Narwhal eye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article Eight as written and read.
Second.
Whitman seconds.
Roll call.
Benoid eye.
Whitman eye.
And nickel's eye.
I just want to highlight that this also says that there's a highly likely a one thousand dollar annual programming cost to go with that.
Is it currently a programming cost?
We found out, yeah, actually there is.
And what is it now?
It'll be, we, we found out that the old light wasn't properly programmed. The one, not the one we're replacing, but the one on the office at the side of the street.
Have we been paying for the programming?
No, but we should have been.
Oops.
Don't tell him.
All right, moving on.
Moving on, whoops.
I make a motion that we place Article Nine to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from free cash for the purpose of fixing the sewer line located under the pool house, located at two fifty Main Street, Rutland, including but not limited to site preparation and restoration and all other incidental and related expenses, or take action, any action in relation thereto.
And we have a second?
Whitman seconds.
And discussion?
Chairman, this was approved by the Capital Improvement Committee, who reviewed this. It was called, originally what happened is that they thought there was backups in this line, and Joe sent the Sewer Department to go in and check out the line and camera the line. We did it a couple of times and worked with them. As it turned out, we determined, Joe determined that there was an actual problem with the actual sewer lines themselves, and that they had to be fixed. So the project is scheduled for this winter for Joe's department to do the work, but there's costs involved to actually get this fixed. And we consider this a public health issue that has to be addressed.
Joe, wasn't it, didn't you mention something about sinking or something about, there's some kind of sinking in that area? Was that mentioned in your comments before?
The sewer line is sagged under the building, so it's gonna collect solid and continually.
So it's just the pipes? That there's no, the actual ground isn't having issues?
The folks who did the building inspection called out poor compaction in the sidewalk, and the sidewalk was also addressed, needs to be replaced, but we're just gonna go right after the plumbing at this point.
Do we know what was causing, was it the sewer line that was causing the sinking?
No, it's probably poor construction, soils, bad soils.
So, right, I get the same question. So the building itself is not?
It's sound, it's slab upgrade, it just settled.
Okay, so with that, just a slab, it doesn't have a foundation around it?
No.
Ooh, okay.
We have to go in and jack here to the floor and pipe it and put it in.
Leah, do you have any questions?
Nope, no questions from me. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Benoid eye.
Whitman eye.
And nickel's eye.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommends favorable on Article Nine as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah, I did have one discussion. So I think we had a note a couple, several weeks ago, that there were some repairs made, or you had some.
Plumbering.
Exploration, exploration, exploration work done to come up to this conclusion. And then it came out of the Sewer Enterprise account?
Yep.
So is there any money in here to replace that to the Sewer Enterprise account so that cost gets spread out to the entire town, rather than just the sewer water users?
Well, the total repair is thirty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, no, thirty, this one here, I understand. This has come out of free cash.
That's spread out across the town. The others would be just the sewer users. So this does spread out of my whole town.
This one does.
Right, he wants to know about the previous cost.
But there was a previous expense to do some work there.
Like sixty, two hundred bucks or something like that.
That was taken out of sewer expenses or.
Yeah, we spent seven hundred bucks TV in the line.
Se, oh, seven?
Seven hundred dollars.
Oh, I didn't, that's not the, I don't, I remember the number to be quite a bit more than that.
Yeah, no, seven hundred dollars, the TV.
Well, I saw some paperwork somewhere I read it, because that's what brought my attention to it, and I thought it was more than that.
No.
Because I understood, the first was some money paid at Recreation for the plumber.
Originally, yes.
Two plumbers to visit, two different times, and then that money was taken out of the sewer line for the inspection, that's all.
And the total amount was only seven hundred dollars?
I can go back, well, no, maybe fourteen hundred in total, fourteen hundred, because we had to go back a second time.
Okay, because the, you said six fifteen thirty-two, and then the CCD TV.
You only, we only paid to inspect the line and paid for a plumber. That's all we paid.
No, I, Joe, I'm not, I'm not arguing. I understand that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong we're doing. But what I'm saying is, the water and sewer users are the ones who paid for that.
Right.
It should be spread out amongst all the taxpayers, because it's a town facility. That's my point. This comes up every year and has for, as long as I can remember, for the water and sewer, when something wants to get spent on, it's, can relate it to the water and sewer users, that's where it gets spent there. But when it's, that's why we charge the town buildings for water and sewer, so that value gets spread out. That's only my only question relating to this article of the previous work.
I mean, my.
And again, I'm not saying it's a big amount.
Truthfully, I don't disagree with it, but I think it's a small amount.
Well, I understand that now.
I don't disagree with your point.
I thought that was a bigger number before. I'm just trying to make the point so that that's what it is.
But, you know, I mean, it's, it's a town building serviced by town sewer, and the failures in a sewer line that's associated with the town building, so to me, it's not a big reach. I understand your point. I do.
Yeah, I do too.
Is there any more work that needs to be done over there, other than the sewer?
Oh, there's lots of work. There's all identified in the Capitol Report.
There's a lot of work to be done everywhere.
So, I see here the G and L Plumbing, we have twenty-four three fifty, so that means your cost is gonna be about eleven, ten, six fifty? Okay, and we have enough staff? I know that we are very tight over there.
If we have to, we'll have to hire out, but that's, the plan is to do it in house.
Before storms, hopefully.
Any other discussion? Okay, Pete?
Rochella eye.
Ola.
Winaka eye.
Narwhal eye begrudgingly.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do make quite a bit of money on that, sort of Recreation program.
They make it on, they're very honest with us. They don't make the money on the pool. They make it on summer fun. They told us that.
Yeah, isn't that, who included that though?
Nope. It's different.
Okay. All right, Carol.
Um, I make a motion that the Select, Select Board recommends favorably Article Nine as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
And roll call?
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
I make a motion that we place Article Ten to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of replacing the roof on the Rutland Community Center Building located at fifty-three Glenwood Road Rutland, including all incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
And do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Discussion?
I have a lot of discussion here in terms of, I wanna, kinda, let's, we might as well set the tone on this article, because, yeah, Tom knows what I'm talking about here. So, one of the things that I've discovered, and, and, uh, it really relates to the Facilities Management Plan study we did, is that there's a, a lot of work that needs to be done in all of our town buildings. Our buildings have not been kept to the standards that they should have been, and we have to start taking care of these buildings. And we have some free cash here, and, uh, myself and the DPW director spent a great deal of time going over what we call a Facilities Management Report, which you were all sent quite some time ago. And we looked at the estimates and those costs and the needs, and we tried to focus as much as can on the immediate needs. Probably totally focus on immediate needs of the building. So, when we look at these next articles, we're trying to, to, to address the key issues in the articles to protect the envelope of the building. Because before you can do anything on the inside of the building, you gotta make sure that no water and stuff comes into the building. Uh, this community center roof is, is reaching its useful life, uh, and you'll see if you look at the Facility Management Plan, it's on, I think, a year or three, so that probably qualifies as a year or two since the plan was done. The roof is already leaking, water's coming in, we don't want, it's also just gonna take some time to get the roof up and rebuilt, but we don't want to damage the interior infrastructure and the laws of that building. So, uh, this and other things are all a result of the Facilities Management Plan. We spent quite a bit of money through a state grant to have a professional come in and evaluate our buildings. Myself and Joe looked at the estimates in that Facility Management Plan, and in some cases, we added some money to them, uh, because, as you know, construction costs have gone up, but we also need to have some engineering work to make sure that some of these projects are, are designed properly and not, as we've had some situations where they were designed wrong in the past, so we need an engineer to look at some of this work. This particular project, I think, is well needed. This is the first step in a lot of other projects that we're gonna have to do there. The, the siding is gone, the windows are gone. This starts with the roof and then we're gonna continue to move on from there, but I think that this is important that we get this done, uh, and we can go through the other things. This was a long conversation with the Capital Improvement Committee. They have recommended this article, and they also, I think, like the fact that we're moving forward to actually fix some of these buildings.
Okay, I mean, not that I disagree that the roof is the most important, starting with the top down, but I'm just curious, and the other priorities originally, you had the siding and then the roof, like, why would that have been?
That wouldn't have been my priority. I've never said that, 'cause I always think the roof is better. I hate the siding.
Who set these priorities?
This, this came in the, under the Facility Management Plan, and Joe looked at it, and this, like I said, was a year or three.
This is the one that, um?
The one that was done by, uh, Hassett Associates.
I'm just curious why they were deciding before the roof.
I don't know why either, but I wouldn't agree with it, I was just curious. If they did, I wouldn't agree with it, but I have it here, the Facility Management Plan, 'cause we need to look at it. But you really need to fix the roof first.
And will we ask for recommendations from, um, Capital Improvement at the town, at the town meeting? Will they make recommendations?
They already made recommendations.
No, I know, but I think that they should.
Oh, they should get up and speak to the articles. I mean, they should be.
Do you guys agree?
They usually make the motions, in other towns, they make the motions for that, for these articles.
So, yeah, actually, they are sponsoring it, so I just wanna make sure that we get a recommendation from them on these.
Yeah, I, again, I would recommend to, I'll talk to Harry in Asset, Harry or one of the members can actually get up and, and make the motion. I think that's appropriate.
Leah, do you have any other question, any questions or?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, you can do a roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommends favorably on Article Ten as written and presented.
Second.
How many square feet is the community center?
Hope you're not asking me, 'cause I have no clue. Joe, you have any idea how big that building is?
'Cause ninety thousand sounds.
It's a lot of money.
Ninety thousand sounds like it's a, a lot of money for that.
So, so let me, a couple of, kinda, it's, it's.
But I'm asking.
Just going quick.
Huh?
So, we took the recommendation that was in the study, and the recommendation in the study just called out the engineering cost alone at seven or eight thousand, okay? So then we called an engineer that the town uses regularly, different from water and sewer, we contacted Tyne Bond.
Yeah.
And they gave us an estimate on doing the roof and what it would cost to provide plans and specs. So, we have two sources to come up with that number. It's not so much the square footage as, as the peaks and valleys and making sure it doesn't leak in the future. So, I'd like to think we did our due diligence.
And just so you know, Karen, it has to be prevailing wage on this, 'cause it's a, it's a contracting job.
I, yeah, I just.
That's one of the reasons for high costs.
But you think it's low, right? You think the number's low or high?
No, I think it's high.
But didn't we just have an issue with the woodhouse? We had those, the smiths were coming in much higher than.
It's coming out way higher than what the, what the original was.
Right, and this is a much larger.
Plus the construction has doubled in, in terms of this stuff, so, yeah. And, and the woods house are arguing it tripled, so we gotta, we gotta redo that bit.
So, and that, my concern would be if it's sufficient, but, but, you know, we've got some figures to support, and that's fine.
Any other discussion? Okay, Pete. Okay.
Rochella, aye. What would I?
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article Ten as discussed.
And, do a second.
Waitman, seconds.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Nichols, aye?
I make a motion that we place Article Eleven to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for repairs and improvements to the building and roof of the Rutland Free Library, Pre-Public Library located at eight, two eighty Main Street Rutland, needed as a result of water damage from faulty rooftop equipment areas and shafts, including all incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
And discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wanna.
Yeah, well, go ahead, Leah.
Sorry, I just have a comment. I feel like the library and the public safety building has been a never-ending source of needing free cash because of various construction deficiencies, and I really hope that the town is mindful of this when going forward and looking at additional contracts and construction projects, that they, if these, these companies are still in business, that we're not working with them. Um, 'cause this is just, I feel like we're piecemealing it, and the amount of free cash we've been putting in, we could have almost had a new building at this point.
Right, and, and I, I believe, I believe there were issues from day one, and I don't think the town pursued it at that time, and that's where we, we let our guard down, because they, they should have been going back after that engineering contractor at that time.
Yeah, they've been worked on a few nights.
Yeah, but we remember at that time, they were a horrible contractor.
Let me make some distinguishing, 'cause I want people to get confused. So recently, as I think you're all aware, there was a vote for free cash to actually put on new shingles to the roof. So it's not the roof in terms of the shingles that we're talking about here, that was done, that's new. What we're talking about is a certain segment of roof that houses certain equipment, and, well, they, is, they're called heaters or HVAC units or whatever those devices are. That's where the leaks were occurring in those sections. So there was a roof study that was done, and that was determined that that's done by an engineer, and I think that was, um, which company was that one, Joe?
That was Architects, um, from Western Sampson.
Western Sampson.
Who evaluated the leak after the roof was replaced.
So they evaluated that for the cost of that. So this is, I just don't want people to be confused that this is shingles on a roof, that's not what we're talking about here. But again, this is one of those things where, and, and Joe agrees that there were some engineering faults in this, so we wanted the engineering relook at this as part of this money, that the engineering relook and make sure we do it right this time, whatever that failure was. But we, again, the, the concept here is to fix the envelope of the building, so we don't damage the interior of the library with water coming in, so.
But those three rooftop areas were, there's been some work done on those in years past, there have been.
I wasn't here that, but Joe.
Was there anything done on those sections in the past? Not since I've been here.
There's been several repairs to that roof.
I brought somebody, brought somebody in to evaluate it, you know, and make recommendations. I don't pretend to be a roof expert.
Yeah.
So I hired somebody who does that.
We, we are looking at it pretty thoroughly, and we do wanna make sure we do it right.
No, I'm not disagreeing, I understand, yeah.
But there's, there's money in this money for some engineering look too, to make sure that we get it right. 'Cause we, we agree it's.
I sent out the, both the study and the recommendations, so.
Yeah, I know, it's in the package, it's in your backup documents, I know.
All right, uh, any other discussion? Roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend favorably on Article Twelve as written.
Second.
Article Eleven, yeah. But I was seeing things from it.
I'll second the eleven, not the twelve here.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Pete? Tommy?
Rochella, aye.
What would I?
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article Eleven as discussed.
Second.
Waitman, seconds.
Roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
I make a motion that we place Article Twelve to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of purchasing installing three rooftop gas fire heaters slash air handling units on the roof of the Rutland Free Public Library located at two eighty Main Street Rutland to replace those which are at the end of their useful life and failing, including all incidentals and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this again was approved by the Capital Improvement Planning Commission. Two of the, again, I wanna make sure we clarify this. So, under the CARES money, some of you will remember that we got some CARES money and we funded a heater unit that was in the basement on the, of the library, okay? The units we're discussing now are on the roof of the library. Two of them are already failing very badly, the third one is at its end of useful life. In order to replace these units, you literally have to have a crane come in and move these units on. So it makes sense to do all three of these units. If you look in your packet, you'll see that each individual unit was at like thirty-three grand. We believe that ninety grand for all three units is a reasonable amount. Uh, we won't have to hire the crane to do it multiple times, and we replace them all and get the library back on track.
Now, in the plan, they broke it down by year, so why wouldn't they have considered that when they developed the plan? Makes sense that you wouldn't hire a crane several times to, uh?
That came out of the discussion with me and Joe about doing that third unit and getting it all done, but I, I, I can't speak to the plan, whatever. I didn't even look at it, to be honest with you, in that, in that, in that batch.
Which plan, in the one that Tom put together or the one?
The five-year plan, the.
The Facility Management?
Capital, five-year Capital Improvement.
We, that was, we done, we had done that before they failed.
'Cause they had them, replacing them in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. But still, they, if you need a crane to do it, they should have, I, I would have thought they would have made a recommendation.
Do it all at once, right?
There's like, there's actually like five heating units in this building. There's two down here and three upstairs.
Three on the roof or two on the roof?
Three or three.
Three or three.
I had, there's two down here, I thought there was only one, but there's two down here.
But you already placed one of the ones on the roof.
We placed one of the ones on the ground.
Basement.
The basement, we placed that one. We used CARES money to do that. 'Cause that's where our vaccination plant was, we were able to use CARES money to replace them.
Well, move that stuff upstairs.
On the roof.
All right, any other discussion?
One of them last season was shut off because it was leaking natural gas, so just know that it's, it's important to get it.
Yeah, we gotta get the.
At least it was natural.
At least it's not, it's just, it's just leaking into the air.
Dissipating.
Picture you say that.
All right, roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
I do have a, a question, Joe. Does it, does it make sense to repla- I, I understand they all need to be replaced, but going forward, should they be on a plan to replace them at different times, or are they just alw- always gonna be as needed, or, I mean, I guess if, if one goes down, you've still got two, is it enough heat? But, you know, so you replace the one, or?
Should we, well, these are, they're twenty-five year lifespan, so who's to say?
So they'll just, every twenty-five years move to it?
When that kinda looks like that's what they're trying to do with this plan, but like I said, when you're talking about a crane, that, that doesn't become feasible, this expense.
We have no money, Carol. So this is the only way that these things get done.
We're going forward.
Throw Woodstones in these buildings.
Where's Dave?
Bicycles, come on.
Dave? I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend favorably on Article Twelve this time as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Pete? Okay, Tommy.
Oh, Rochella, aye.
What would I?
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that we place Article Thirteen to see if the town will vote.
Not gonna get a, get a vote on that, yeah.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Twelve, it's okay.
Just, just wanna go.
Seventy-seven thirty, we're only on twelve. I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article Twelve as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
And roll call?
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
Now, I make a motion that we place Article Thirteen to see if the town will approve, will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of repairing fire alarm and sprinkler systems within town-owned buildings, including all incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds. I have a question.
Yeah.
Does this include the school buildings that we had discussed, on Central Trees especially?
No.
No.
That's a different issue we can discuss, but we're, we're actually working on that issue separately, and, uh, Seth is doing it, let's just say Seth is doing a good job of, we'll have an off-the-record conversation on that a little later, Tom.
He's doing a good job, but it's gonna be off the record?
Off the record, yeah. Yeah, it sounds funny, but yeah, off-the-record conversation.
I just, that's not going to be a free cash this fall issue?
No, nope. Matter of fact, if it goes the way we planned, we're not gonna be paying for it. That is under, the estimate right now is under thirty-five thousand dollars slightly, to, and we think that the school administration under that will have to pay for that cost.
People be asking what buildings, what's going on?
Um, several years ago, we replaced the fire alarm systems in all the town buildings. Uh, the last one we did, um, Finance Committee voted money on this building. Um, this had a simplex, uh, fire alarm system in it, which was proprietary, which were running some issues. So that system was completely torn out. This was the last building, so all the town buildings, with the exception of the schools, are all the same manufacturers. They can be, um, repaired by any electrician, anything, any part can be purchased off the shelf, so there's nothing proprietary. At the time, we're switching to a new phone system, um, uh, and getting rid of all of our Verizon copper lines. So we went to a wireless cellular dialer. Uh, so each building has a cellular network that will, if the line goes off, it will, uh, send a message. At that time, uh, technology was, uh, three G, and that is expiring in January, and so we have to replace those, um, cellular, uh, dialers, you could say, in all the town buildings. So that would be done, um, before, if this was voted in November. We've already talked to our vendor. Um, they already have it equipped on the shelf, 'cause they're doing this all over the place. This would get us to five G, even though five G's not available in our area yet, but the system will be able to grow into that once that becomes available. So we should get seven to ten years out of these, uh, going forward, so. And during our annual inspections in all the other town buildings, there's some deficiencies in the sprinkler systems. Uh, DPW is probably the biggest, um, one that needs something to be addressed. Um, so we just roll this whole package together as, you know, part of our annual inspections, these things came up, we'll try to, uh, rectify those.
So either you, either we have something to give the voters that explains all that, or you speak to it.
Yeah, I'll be happy to speak to it.
So will the chief present this article?
It's, it's a capital improvement article, so probably be the Capital Improvement Committee that would present it, and then if the chief can comment on it a piece at once as well.
Okay, so, uh, is the Capital Improvement gonna present all of these, or?
I'm gonna ask them to. That's normally in towns, that's what happens, on capital improvement.
Just 'cause you listed several different ones in all this.
Yeah, I just put the department that was involved in that capital improvement, so if it was a private department issue, I put them as, as part of, sort of, a co-sponsor to it, but it really, it usually, because of the way it's set up, Capital Improvement Committees are in charge of making those recommendations.
Any other discussions? Roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
Tommy.
You're just gonna make sure of the right spot. I make a motion that the Finance Committee vote, I mean, uh, I make a motion that Finance Committee vote favorably on Article Thirteen as presented and written.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Pete? Tommy.
Rochella, aye. What would I?
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
Sure, I make a comment here. I wanna make a kind of a general comment, 'cause I wish I made it earlier, but I wanna do it while potentially people are talking. I just want to thank, um, all the department heads that were involved in putting this thing together. This is a tremendous amount of work that's come into tonight's effort to present you with a lot of information, so I particularly wanted to, to thank the department heads, I would particularly give extra emphasis to that to Joe Buckley, because a lot of these capital items, uh, fall under DPW and working with it, and we had to work a lot with the. Chairman, I make a comment here. I want to make a kind of a general comment because I wish I'd made it earlier, but I want to do it while potentially people are talking. I just wanted to thank all the department heads who were involved in putting this thing together. This is a tremendous amount of work it's come into tonight's effort to present you with a lot of information, so I particularly wanted to, to thank the department heads, particularly give extra emphasis to that to Joe Buckley, because a lot of these capital items fall under DPW and working with it, and we had to work a lot with the Capital Improvement Committee to get all these articles approved by the Capital Improvement Committee. And obviously Beth was very involved in working with me to get this all together, our, our legal team. But I, I just wanted to make sure that people understand, this is a lot of work involved and a lot of good people put, rolled their sleeves and went to work to get this prepared for tonight, so I wanted to put that on the record, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate that.
Select Board rec- I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably article thirteen as written and discussed.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
I make a motion that we place article fourteen to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money from available funds to purchase and equip a new ambulance, such funds to serve as the town's matching portion of the federal assistance to grant firefighter grant for the same purpose or take any action in relation thereto.
And do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I want to talk just briefly. You'll notice in this one, this is the only one that says raise and appropriate. It's not from free cash. And that's because we have an agreement with Oakham to provide services to them, so that revenue Dan did not include in the budget, so that money's going to pay for this particular article. I do want to give, I just gave department heads a lot of credit for what they did tonight, but this one is huge on behalf of the fire chief. He was one of very, very few towns across the country, this is a federal grant, that got this. It's amazing that Rutland got it in lieu of all the people that probably applied for this, so kudos to him and I'll let him comment about this particular article.
How's our chassis coming?
Just like any other manufacturer, it's in process.
It's in process.
Yeah, it's on some ship somewhere and, you know, the computer chips are coming here sometimes.
It's out in San Francisco.
Everything.
Our anticipation delivery would be this time next year. So they gave us three hundred sixty, about four hundred days delivery time. The grant has a two-year window, so we have two years to spend the money, so we should, we should be fine. If, if, in the big scheme of things, this falls in the capital plan as far as the time of when we would have been replacing it anyway, so even though it is delayed, it's going to fall right into the capital plan as far as timing, so the trucks will be spaced apart. Our replacement is scheduled as.
And this was recommended by the Capital Improvement as well.
Yeah.
So is there a reason why the motion doesn't, doesn't just say anything about the five percent?
The motion has the dollar amount.
It does, the explanation in the bottom.
So the explanation of the...
The explanation gives you, yeah, because it's the, that tells you.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
It's Leah, sorry, sorry. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're prepared to explain the funding source, that it wasn't, um, just that it's in the budget, it wasn't counted as revenue in the budget, so we're good, but just so that's clear to the voters.
Oh, go ahead.
It, it, Leah, it is in the explanation, but we will have to elaborate, but it says with Oakham, the contract service money from Oakham will cover the match, but we will explain that more in detail at town meeting.
Okay.
If we have, if we're asked.
It's Oakham.
It's Oakham.
Oakham, oh, yeah. What do they say? I would say...
We gotta get local here on.
I want you to make sure.
I'm getting wrong, so it's like...
Bear, Barry.
Very, yeah.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, die.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend favorably on article fourteen as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Pete? Kay? Tommy?
Rochella eye.
Oud eye.
Winica eye.
Norwell eye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably article fourteen as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
I make a motion that we place article fifteen to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to the police cruiser lease account zero zero one dash two one zero dash five eight five zero dash zero 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 to pay the lease payment on a twenty twenty-one Ford Explorer police cruiser or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Okay, discussion. So I, I thought we were on a rotating schedule with this already, weren't we, Karen? Making budgeted.
This was something that he took out in order to stave off some cuts. He took this out and said he would use his gift account to pay for this.
So the, the chair of the Finance Committee is absolutely correct. That is the discussion here. The chief is asked, and again, this is one of the things we said, that, you know, hopefully if we get free cash in the fall, we can pay for this out of it, and we intend to try to put this back into the budget when we do next year's budget, but the chair has reported it correctly and we're just simply not making them use this money for the gift account, letting them do the normal things that would be done with that gift account, but that's completely up to the boards. The chief is on, if you want to ask him anything, but that's...
I mean, I, I mean, I wouldn't have recommended taking something like this out because it was on a specific schedule, and I know he's using his gift account, but I'm not really quite sure of the choice.
He was trying, he was trying to stave off some cuts to personnel.
Okay.
And that was his decision when we gave it to him.
Right, I mean, everybody had to make, make a decision, but, I mean, I think cruisers are obviously crucial as well. So, so Nick, do you have any comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, my only comment is that, you know, it was real, like, like Ron said, I was trying to stop layoffs. Most important is personnel. If I don't have people to respond to calls, I, we got nothing. But, um, so, so yes, I did cut the cruiser lease from the budget with, you know, worst-case scenario, if I had to, I would pay for it out of the gift account, basically money donated by Devro, but it's really not Devro's responsibility to fund my operating budget. So I was hoping that we could recoup that money with free cash in the fall, and so that's what I'm requesting.
Wasn't typically Devro used for salary for a police officer? That, wasn't that kind of the intent of the funds?
Yes, it was back when we were severely understaffed, and then we got to a point where my operating budget funded my entire staff, and so now we kind of use Devro as, you know, for community policing money, for training programs, for software that make things go better. Basically, but that, that was the intent. Now it's kind of going back to we're using the Devro money to pay for basic operating expenses.
So, I mean, I guess I'm trying to, try to see the difference, so why couldn't you just use that money to save your staff rather than taking it from the cruiser? You know what I mean? How is it any different? You just kind of take one and...
Because, right, there's no, there's no guarantee that the, the Devro money's going to come in every year, and if worse came to worse, I would rather give the cruiser back to the bank than, than lay people off.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend favorably on article fifteen as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, I got one question. What's, what's Devro contributing now to the town?
It's about forty thousand a year.
That's all?
Yes.
Yeah, it used, used to be five.
They're not required to give a dime, so they could sit, but most companies, most not.
Right.
And this lease is around twelve to something?
Twelve nine oh eight it says.
Twelve two seventy-two.
Oh, sorry. Twelve two seventy-two. I got the one twelve.
Twenty-five to be specific.
Any other discussion? Pete?
Rochella eye.
Oud eye.
Winica eye.
Norwell eye.
I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend favorably article fifteen as written and discussed.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Yeah, chief, I, I guess I'd like to see a little bit more discussion on that at budget time. I can understand, understand the difficulties in some of it, but I, I really would hate to see changing up this rotation of these cruisers that we kind of have set up over the last few years. So, not, not saying that it's a, a, a bad call, but I'd like to see more discussion on, on working other ways to do things.
We're definitely going to try to put it back in the regular budget for the third year or something.
Yeah, so, because it's much easier to budget if we know it's in the rotation, in my opinion, so.
But, Mr. Chair, I'm in full agreement. I, I look forward to that discussion, but, you know, like I said, if I cut people, it would have been far more damaging to public safety than losing one car.
Right.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye. Okay, seventeen, seventeen, I'm sorry.
I wish. Um, I just, I'm sorry, I do have not to this, but I know that there were comments made, Ron, that said that people are not going to be able to use free cash to get their budget items back again, and I just want to make sure that everybody's had their say from all the departments and wondering if there are any other personnel that were, any, anything like the fire and the police.
There's no other personnel matters because everybody came back. The only exception I remember of people who didn't come back was people in Watersort and DPW. They're the only ones that really lost staff, and we're going to revisit that issue in the annual town meeting because I think it's horrendous that we cut staff there, but it is what it is. We had to cut funds and we did what we had to do. So there's no other personnel matters here. The, the general concept of this town meeting articles was that we're going to try to focus as much as absolutely possible on facilities management, buildings, because they're such a huge need. There's some exceptions to that for like a snowplow, we actually have to have for the plow. The lease of the car, we made an exception for it, but, but generally, department heads gave, didn't really get too much into these kind of things, replacing cut money, very little of it, but there's these couple that were there, yeah. I think that, just to be my last comment on that, Carol, I think that's going to be a very big discussion about the annual budget as to what things we try to get back in the budget that were cut, but again, we're not into the budget system far enough to, to talk about that yet.
Are we on sixteen?
Yes.
Because I've already checked them off.
They're empty, huh?
Um, I make, make a motion to place article sixteen to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of purchasing a new snowplow assembly or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Okay, I, I have a question on the topic. It talks about a twenty twenty-one Ford Explorer police cruiser.
No, that was part of the...
That's the lease.
Oh, that, oh, that's...
That's the lease one you took the next one.
Oh, that's...
Space, that's I think what it's...
Yeah, so this is...
Put on your glasses, buddy.
You know, it is.
That's what got me confused.
You tried to pop right in with it.
There's no space.
I know, but...
Wanted to clarify that.
So this is just an old plow, and, and like I said, we try to focus on buildings, but we have to have plows for the winter. We had to replace this.
So this is a replacement plow?
Replacement plow, Joe.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
And how old's the truck?
Well, I want to say the truck is oh-six, oh-seven.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye. You lost your... We can't do anything.
Do you feel comfortable?
Make a motion to, that the Finance Committee recommends favorably article, we had sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yep.
Favorably as read.
My second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, Pete?
Oud eye.
Winica eye.
Norwell eye.
That threw off my rhythm.
Sorry.
Better check those minutes very closely.
Sorry. He does this.
I make a recommend, I make a motion that we place article seventeen to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash. See, my rhythm is all off too, thank you.
Tommy, you can't leave the table again, you're throwing everybody off.
I recommend, see, it was, it was right, started right, that the Select Board recommends favorably article sixteen.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Any discussion? Discussion? All right, roll call.
Benoid eye.
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye.
Does Leah want to start reading a little?
Why do you think she's where she's at, so that she doesn't have to?
I make a motion that we place art-
Didn't we just do that? We just placed it, so we're waiting for Finance Committee.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend article seventeen favorably as read.
Second.
Wait a minute, we didn't have seventeen here, no, you're forgetting. No, we didn't have the motion on six, seventeen.
Wait, no, we did seventeen. I started reading.
You started reading, then you had to go back. You, you're, I was like, wait a second, I must have fallen asleep there.
Yeah, we didn't do seventeen.
No, we did sixteen. Now we're on seventeen. Right, now we're on seventeen, so go ahead, start there.
You did seventeen.
But I dumped it.
They voted on sixteen to recommend.
Right, we need a motion to place seventeen.
Select Board voted to recommend sixteen?
I did that.
So just, seventeen to place.
Place, no, approval on seventeen, right?
Seventeen to place.
Seventeen. Carol hasn't been motioning yet.
I haven't checked yet, too.
Okay, Ron, it's your job from now on to bring coffee to the ladies, keep everybody going.
Yeah, that's what I should have, yeah. We may be here on day two, but wait.
I make a motion to place article seventeen to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money for free cash for the purpose of funding repairs to various town buildings designated in the recently completed facilities evaluation and management plan as in need of immediate attention or action, including all incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds. I have a couple comments about the way that the wording of this article is.
Can I explain it first, Leah, just so that, I think it might answer your question, or do you want to just go first?
Well, I, I'm just worried about, I think I understand that we'll have in the backup supplement, supplemental information what the repairs are, but the way this article reads, it kind of is a, a blanket that we can do whatever is in the facilities evaluation and management plan. So I'm not sure if we want to specify as presented in supple- you know, in our additional packet or supplemental information, or maybe, I don't know.
Okay, so, so let me answer that, because, because me and Joe spent a great deal of time on this particular article. So if you go into the facilities management plan, you're going to see that in every building, they call this issue as immediate need, that the plumbing is old, electrical is old, and specifically there's landscaping that's too close to the building that needs to be moved away from the building and cut out because it's allowing water into the building. So instead of having, you know, six different separate accounts with this money in, it defines this money as being fifty thousand dollars, what we're allocating to fund the immediate repairs as outlined in the facilities management for, plan. So it's really, part of this problem, as I understand it, is some of this is just to have a plumber, electrical, and people come in and evaluate and find out what is indeed we have to fix, and what is problem, the pipes and stuff are so old, so it's first part of it, I think, is going to be an evaluation, and then as they do the evaluation, they're going to have to make the repairs, but it was called out in almost every single town building that we've never done any look at the plumbing or electrical issues here, so...
If, sorry, then I, I guess I struggle, if it's going to be more of the evaluation side with an engineer or whatever, then I think it's a little bit misleading to say for the fun, purpose of funding repairs to various, it's, because repairs aren't, it's not necessarily guaranteed going to be the repairs, it's going to be the start of what, so I guess I'm, I, I'm struggling with the wording, I guess.
Yeah, I'll have Joe explain it, but he can give you more detail, but I think I know the answer, but go ahead.
Hi Leah, how can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
So when we went through the facilities management report, you'd go to like, I don't know, say, community, the town hall, community hall, they would say, okay, electrical, electrical outlet switches, maybe five thousand dollars, or they might say, check all the valves in the building, have a plumber go through and check all the valves to make sure you don't have any bad leaks, a thousand dollars. They did, they, they did things like that consistently with all of the town buildings. So we basically just summed them all up and put them as a lump to try and take that work on. Does that clarify it a little bit? It's not so much a study as it is to get an electrician in on the ground or a plumber in regularly to go through your systems, basically to stem some loss and make sure at least the bulk of it meets code. Some of it was silly stuff, like install a carbon monoxide detector in certain places, things like that. I, I hope that clears it up for you.
Yeah, I just, I, I worry about it being misleading, you know, I, my memory from town meeting to town meeting would be, we already funded these repairs. If we come back in the, in the spring with additional free cash or something and what, what additional repair is done, that we're saying the same thing. So I wonder if we want to include the purpose of funding evaluations and repairs to various or some, I, I'm not sure if, I mean, you guys had, had this discussion... I, I'm not sure if, I mean, you guys had, had this discussion, it went through legal, so I'm fine with whatever, I just don't wanna have expectations set incorrectly.
I think the purpose of calling out the facilities management plan, because the facilities management plan lays all the kind of details out, so that we can only spend money for those things that are outlined in that facilities management plan, I think that was the goal.
Yeah.
So, it, 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 it's very specific to what the plan says under those type of immediate repairs. But some of it is evaluation, but once they evaluate and look at the pipes are sold, they may have to do repairs, it's a combination of all of that, is what I think.
Karen, doesn't this fall under like the maintenance line, under the budget, isn't this like just refunding additional funds towards maintenance, building maintenance?
So the answer to that question is absolutely yes, the problem is we've never funded any of it, so.
Well, there's, there's, there's a building, uh, item, budget.
Yeah, but that's, that's mainly cleaning.
That's just cleaning, that's exactly right.
It's, it's very small amounts. The concern I have is, is that the evaluation and management plan shows the town hall immediate repairs is forty-one-six, fifty-two, fifty-two with the one point two-five multiplier, town annex is forty-one sixty-three, so what concerns me is what are we using the fifty for, or are we just going to decide what things need to get done?
So, so I think if you look at, you're, you're absolutely right, the immediate repairs, I sent you guys out documents of all the immediate repairs, and you're giving me, I think, the summary of all the immediate repairs. This, this article does not attempt to do all the immediate repairs, it only looks at the plumbing, electrical, and the landscaping. So it doesn't, it doesn't get into every one of those repairs under immediate repairs. But you're correct, there's a lot more that should be done.
Yep.
The problem is, is this, you're, you're absolutely right, the, the money is really maintenance, is for cleaning. We hadn't been taking care of the buildings the way we should, but hopefully what this do is get us up to date, and in the future, we need to add money in for doing this kind of stuff, cause this really should be a budget item, not a one-time fix everything, cause we haven't done it in years.
Give us more money and, what do you think?
That's, we don't have money, it's why, it's real do.
So all you gotta do is get us more money and we'll do it.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with, with some part of what Karen's saying there, that maybe in this article, it should say that you're only gonna do parts of that plan, right, I, I understand what it says, and I understand what you got written, but it could be written that, I mean, it could be interpreted as you're gonna fund that whole plan and do everything with this amount of money.
So if you look at it, it.
It does say.
Again, we gotta go to the explanation.
No, I understand that.
So the explanation part says these repairs are townwide plumbing, electrical, light, carpeting, and landscaping, it calls out those specific immediate repairs, not all the immediate repairs.
Any explanation?
The explanation.
Thinking the article should have something to do with it's only part of that list, there's a lot more to do.
Yeah, that was, if I may, that was my point, is if we're not funding all of the immediate needs, which I don't think we are.
We are not.
And if some of those immediate needs are more evaluations and not necessarily actionable repairs, that, you know, oh, the plumbing is gonna be fixed in whatever building, no, we're gonna have it evaluated to see what repairs it needs, then I think we need to either call out the specifics in the article or be more explicit in the article as to what we are funding. Um, I don't know how the rest of the Select Board feels, it sounds like Fincom, um, and I are kind of on the same page generally, but I don't know for sure, I don't misspeak on behalf of anyone.
It's unfortunate, but I'm frank with you, the, the report isn't that specific, it doesn't give you, it, it's not boiled down that tight.
But you could say.
Yeah, Caroline.
I, 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 I'm agreeing with everybody, and I, maybe just say it a different way, is you have to have a list, because you're not gonna just walk into a building and see what has to happen, so you have to have some kind of a priority list um, that, on, in order that you're going to attack this, and, and came up with fifty thousand dollars somewhere, and I guess I'm wondering, what, how does that correlate to your plan of action?
So, every single building produced an immediate action spreadsheet, roughly two pages long, they'd say electrical work, five thousand, plumbing, five thousand. We basically just total all that up and made the fifty thousand.
So that's your punch list?
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's not that tight, um, in other words, they don't call out, you know, you need to put so many new receptacles in this room, the report didn't take it to that detail. They basically just said that you need to do electrical building, electrical, immediate electrical work in almost every town building, immediate plumbing work in almost every town building, and they gave you a lump sum, and we basically summed all that up and wrote that article, so that we wouldn't continue to fall behind.
So if, if we don't have this facility management plan available for everybody there, I think that we need to pull out a page or something, or.
So, so I have the report here, but here's what I would recommend, if it fits what you want, if it's, tell me if this fits you want, so in the article it says, it says in the second line, funding, at the end of the first line, funding repairs, so what if we were put, funding repairs for plumbing, electrical, light, carpeting, and landscaping to various town buildings as designated in the recently completed facility management plan? So that gives you the specifics right in the article. If that helps you, makes you feel better, I think that could do it. So we just call out those specific repairs in the article for those things, and then you, truthfully, you'd have to look in the facilities management plan and see what they are, the details.
Are you good with that, Leah?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's better, I, yeah.
Okay, so just, you got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Do you wanna amend?
I'll make an amendment, um, to Article seventeen as discussed, and on the mitts.
And you amend your second, Leah?
Yeah, Whitman amends, I amend my second.
Okay, and a roll call?
Benoit's eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
I make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend favorably on Article seventeen as written with its amendment and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Pete.
Rochella eye.
Eye, Modak eye, sorry.
Winica eye.
Narwold.
No, work emails.
Work, you aren't you working already?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board recommend favorably Article seventeen as written and amended.
Do you have a second?
Whitman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoit's eye.
Whitman eye.
Nichols eye? Seventeen.
This is the type for Leah to read.
So you get the big bucks.
I make a motion that we place Article eighteen to see if the town will vote to A, authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, and on such terms as the Select Board deems appropriate, the fee to and/or permanent and temporary easements in, on, under, and over certain parcels of land located on or near Palmagussett Road, Route fifty-six, Memorial Drive, Miles Road, Molton Mill Road, Vista Circle, Richards Avenue, and Brunel Drive, and approximately, approximately shown on plans titled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Plan and Profile of Palmagussett Road, Route fifty-six, in the town of Rutland, Brewster County, prepared by CHA associates on file with the town clerk, as said plans may be amended from time to time and/or incorporated into an easement plan, and land within two hundred feet of said parcels for public way purposes, including without limitation the construction, installation, inspection, maintenance, improvement, repair, and the paper is leaving.
Maybe they're going to get coffee.
And or relocation of rights of way, sidewalks, drainage, utilities, driveways, retaining ways, guardrails, slopes, grading, round, rounding, construction, landscaping, and other structures and or appurtenances.
Appertainesses.
Appertainesses, say it quick, to enable the town to undertake the Palmagussett Road, Route fifty-six reconstruction project
To read this.
For any and all purposes and uses incidental or related thereto, B, transfer the care, custody, and control of the portions of town-approved, town-owned properties shown on the of for said plans from the board or officer having custody of the same for the purposes for which such properties are currently held to the board, Select Board, for said public way purposes, and further to dedicate said portions of the town-owned properties to said purposes, and if applicable, authorize the Select Board to submit petitions to the General Court to permit the foregoing under Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution or otherwise, C, authorize the Select Board to dispose of excess land located
Sorry.
outside the altered layout of the foregoing public ways, if any, on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the Select Board deems appropriate, D, raise an appropriate transfer from available funds and or borrow a sum of money to fund the foregoing project, and any and all costs incidental or related thereto, including without limitation the cost of any land easement acquisitions, appraisals, and surveys, and further, E, authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a second?
Wait, wait, Whitman seconds, and I think Carol is amazing for reading through that.
I'm just saying the whole time I can't wait for Randy to read that.
The motion doesn't have to have all that stuff in it.
Somebody has to read it originally.
No, he, he reads the whole thing, he has to read this whole thing.
Oh, he has to read your article, yeah.
Do you wanna know what it means?
We, we know what it means. We're taking whatever pieces we need to do the TIPS project on Palmagussett.
It gives them the permission to do it.
I thi, I think that you, like, did you get paid per word?
Actually, the lawyer wrote that, and actually, most of that has to get approved.
They got paid per word.
But, um, most of it has to be, that, that follows the standard format from the federal Department of Transportation, not, yeah, it's federal, yeah.
Leah, do you have any questions?
I just wanted, I think that it's noted here, this is a two-thirds vote, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, I just wanted to point that out to anybody listening also, but, yeah.
Well, just, if I could add to that, Leah, cause I'm not sure that that will come with. So a TIP program is a federally funded road project that goes through the CMRPC, our Regional Planning Council, and towns have to go to the Regional Planning Council to get their projects approved by them and by approval from the federal funding to allow those roads to be fixed, usually for roads that cross town lines, but not always.
Okay, any other discussion?
It desperately needs to be done.
Well, it does, but I think people are gonna be very concerned who live in these areas, so.
Mm-hmm, well, we've been talking about it a hundred years now.
Yeah, we can't get this done faster.
I mean, we had, we had information meetings and everything on this, when this all was going through.
This talks about authorizing borrowing money, there's no cost associated with this, in this article?
Did we talk about possible Chapter ninety?
Um, because, we're gonna take the money from Chapter ninety, so that's the plan at this time. If I, to be frank with you, I, I could go like this, and maybe two hundred thousand?
Oh, no, no, I understand what you're saying, but there's, so there's no cost associated, but it authorizes the borrowing of a sum of money.
If we have to, yeah.
We'll go attention out, it should all come out of Chapter ninety-nine. I doubt very much it'd be any borrowing.
So you have to actually, the regulations require all the parcels and, that are temporary easements, permanent easements, and takings to be appraised, um, and have a title search done, so until all that's done, I, I can't give you a real number.
So the motion mentions Chapter ninety, Tom, did you see that?
Yeah, I saw that, but I'm just saying, it says it authorizes the borrowing of money, that's what I'm saying.
It's covering all phases.
No, I, I understand, but.
It's not expected, but just in case there's something happens, yeah.
It's an eight million dollar project.
Right.
It's a big deal.
Now, let's get the other question I had.
That's gonna happen next year.
Go ahead, Leah.
Hope so.
Not hope so, it's gonna happen next year.
Sorry, have the notices.
Oh, look at now, she's the positive one here, all of a sudden.
I don't tell the state what to do.
Have notices gone out to any impacted home or landowners, or not yet?
We can't do it until this is passed.
He, he can't do it until it's passed, and it's at town meeting.
Okay, I just was curious as to, um, you know, I'm sure that there's going to be discussion about that, um, so that was just my question.
There were, there were several informational meetings back when this first started, and it was all very much outlined.
But if it's been that long, we could have had some coming and going of people, so.
Yep.
Can this go from where, Joe, from Main Street to?
Main to the big subdivisions.
To Richard, um, yeah.
Richards.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, that's not too far, really.
It's about a mile.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Benoit's eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye? If you can read that in your motion, Tom.
Um, I know, but I, I know what the question I have is now. Um, I make a motion that the Finance Board votes, recommends favorably on Article eighteen as written.
Second.
Any discussion, go ahead, Tom.
So, Joe, what, is the Chapter ninety funds up this year by quite a bit, or no?
No, they're about the same.
A little bit.
Well, I mean, there's been a lot of things written about them adding more money to Chapter ninety, and, but they haven't done that yet.
The Commonwealth has proposed increased funding to the bond bill, but it hasn't happened.
Doesn't happen, okay.
I'll make one more comment there, Tom. There's some consideration, and the MMA sent me a letter asking for me to write to our legislators, asking for more money for infrastructure, including road work initiatives, so MMA is pushing to use ARPA funds to this degree as some effect, so that is the new twist on it this year, now we'll see if it gets passed, but there is a new twist this year. So maybe we're more likely to see an increase, but I'm not sure.
We did recently get a grant, though, to do the other part of fifty-six.
And when will that be done?
Well, if the state holds true to what they wanna do, they want everything done by June thirty, twenty twenty, by twenty twenty-two, so.
I was like, aw, okay, that was the same thing they told us a while ago, back in the information system, that information.
They run the whole project, they run everything, we don't get involved at all.
Yeah, they do, but that was the same thing they told us, that they would do all of it.
What, on this most, this other piece?
Yep.
Actually, what got that all bogged down was that culvert at, um, at the park.
I don't care about the culvert, I care about the piece from Richards through.
But they couldn't do, couldn't do.
That's the piece that matters to me.
Until the culvert thing was straightened out, they couldn't go forward.
I think people are gonna happy to see any good work.
But that's gonna get fixed with this, right?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, any other discussion? Pete.
Rochella eye.
Modak eye.
Winica eye.
Narwold eye.
I make a motion, um, that the Select Board recommend favorably, oops, Article eighteen as written.
Do you have a second?
Whitman seconds.
Roll call?
Benoit's eye.
Whitman eye.
Nichols eye?
Make a motion that we place Article nineteen to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapters one forty, Section one thirty-nine, Paragraph C, to provide that a person aged seventy or over in the town of Rutland shall not be charged a dog license fee or take any action in relation thereto.
Do you have a second?
Whitman seconds.
Discussion?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, um, town clerk is on, I think this is self-explanatory, but the town clerk is on, do you have any questions about this particular article?
Uh, well, Anita has written here that late fees would apply, so it doesn't, it's not zero. Am I right, Anita?
That would only be late fees if it wasn't paid by the due date, which is actually March thirty-first of every year.
Because they still have to apply for a license, they get the license, but if they apply after the deadline, they pay the late fees?
They would, still have to.
So.
And it, it's, it's hard to, quite a few ta, area towns have, have adopted this lately, and we've had over the years, every once in a while, we have someone come in and ask about it. It's hard to figure out what the revenue loss would be, I ran the figures for seventy and over residents today, and there are currently eight hundred and ninety-one, but there's no easy way without spending hours going back and figuring out how many households that break down to, and how many might have dogs. But even for, um, say every, uh, if it was a hundred dogs, that would be based on, on all dogs being neutered or spayed, it would be approximately a thousand dollars, but like I said, we put it on because we've been asked by residents.
They probably all have like six shih-tzus or something like that.
Just make sure that when we get into budget season, that you tell Dan that, that revenue calculation will go down by a grand or whatever, so come up with some idea what the decrease of that revenue will be. The fox eat my chicken, so I can get dogs now.
And actually, my guess is that some seniors wouldn't even bother to take advantage of it, they'd still pay the fee, you know, but it, it's hard to calculate.
So Cheryl, do you have concerns about what the clarity?
Yeah, I just don't know if, because it says to help seniors that have dogs by reducing the license fee to zero, so it's not the license fee that's charged, but a late fee, so I just don't wanna set us up for, set zero.
Should we say, not to say excluding any late fees?
Or late fees still applies.
Still, uh, late fees.
Right. Yeah, my explanation was a whole lot longer, I think Ron kinda simplified it for, for Lauren, but we could, we could work on that.
Yeah, Lauren simplified it, I didn't go in with it.
Do you wanna, just so you wanna amend? Do you want to, just so you want to amend it?
So I would like to amend my motion to include that late fees are...
Still has...
Don't you want to just amend the explanation? I don't think you want to amend the article, you want to amend the explanation, I think. I don't think you need a motion to amend the explanation, do you?
I think she wants to amend the article because it specifically says no...
But it says you shall not be charged a dog license fee, which is true. She, no one's going to be charged a dog license fee. Going to be charging a late fee.
But a late fee they may consider as a dog license fee.
So down here, you put to help seniors who, by, the license fee is zero, late fees still apply.
I want the fees to apply or not.
But if you put it in the explanation, it doesn't have any teeth. If it's in the motion, it's part of what it is.
I suppose.
Is your intention to eliminate the fee for late fee? Is that your intention?
No, I mean, no, my intention is to clear that.
Clear that, right.
You've still got to get it in on time.
So the explanation does need to be changed because it does explain...
No, I think you need to change it.
But also change the motion.
In my opinion, we would change the motion just to include it. It's no big deal.
Shall not be charged license fee.
But shall still be responsible for any late fee.
So it should be in both places, is it accurate, plus the explanation?
Could you include it? If they're going to file late, can, they can, if they're going to pay a late fee, why can't they pay the $10, too?
Yeah, that is...
You know, if it's filed late, they're on the hook for everything.
Just double it then.
I mean, it's small dollars, but...
Actually, yeah, it's more of a, you know, like a feel-good article. We could do that, say that somebody charged a dog license fee as long as the dog was licensed by March 31st or by the deadline every year.
Void if not filed.
In a timely manner or by the deadline?
According to deadline.
Yep.
Okay, I like that.
Wait, if not...
Yep.
If not done by the deadline, by the required, by the required date.
Right.
Got it, Tamika? Okay.
She'll make it sound good.
So be careful. You're not old enough to take advantage of this anyway.
Leah, you good with your second amendment?
Yeah, I meant my second. I like that wording. Thanks, Carol.
Okay, roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
Nichols' eye?
I make a motion that the Finest Committee recommends favorably on Article 19 as written with the amendment and discussed.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Pete? Okay.
Rochella, aye?
Mo's aye.
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article 19 as written and amended.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
Nichols' eye?
I make a motion that we place Article 20 to see if the town will vote to adopt or re-adopt and accept the provisions of Section 20 of Chapter 32B of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended by Section 15 of Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016, Establishing and Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund to authorize the Select Board and Treasurer to execute a declaration of trust, creating it an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriated to such fund, to designate the Treasurer as the trustee of such trust, to authorize the transfer of any and all monies currently held for the purpose of paying retiree health and life benefits to such a trust, and to authorize the trustee to invest and reinvest the monies in such fund according to the prudent investor rule established under Chapter 203C of the Massachusetts General Laws, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a second?
Waitman, seconds. I'd like to just hear Ron's explanation of that, though, please.
Sure, so, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we already have an open trust fund established. But it's my understanding, and I'm talking to Becky, that as a result of the Massachusetts Modernization Act, it was, you guys might have heard about it, was a modernization to all kinds of local rules that that, the passage of that act resulted in the auditor picking this up for the audit that we had to put in this language to keep us up to speed with the new municipal modernization act. So this is mostly just a housekeeping issue to keep us meeting the state requirements as to the trust funds. And there's two documents attached with this in your packet about all of that, but it's, frankly, it's just a housekeeping issue is all it really is.
Well, the key, I think, there is this says expendable trust, because we were always told we put money in here, we couldn't spend it on anything.
You can't spend anything else, you're going to spend it on...
No, I know. They said you couldn't even spend it. That's what they, that's what was always said. So I think this changes, updates it.
I'm a little confused because, as I understand this trust, you're supposed to continue building up the trust, and at some point in time, it could be used to pay healthcare benefits for retirees. So the intention of this is to build up that trust to help us, just like a pension, to help us actually fully fund the healthcare costs. So that's the way this is designed, but again, I don't, I didn't really follow the Modernization Act, but the auditors flagged this in the audit and told Becky that she had to update that to meet the Modernization Act, which was described as a housekeeping kind of change.
Right, so this wasn't a finding, it was just a recommendation for...
It was a recommendation to meet the state requirement as a result of the changes in the Modernization Act. So, yeah, it's a, I guess the auditor said that this has to be done.
It is a finding.
It's a finding.
Okay, so it's got to be approved, really.
So it has to, it has to be approved, I guess, for the most of...
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
Nichols' eye?
I make a motion that the Finest Committee recommend favorably on Article 20 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Pete?
Rochella, aye? That makes me smile every time.
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommends favorably Article 20 as written.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols' eye? Just whipping right through these now.
I make a recommend, make a motion that we place Article 21 to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw Article 12 marijuana establishments by deleting Section 87, Subsection C in its entirety and reserving said subsection for future use as set forth in a handout titled November 18, 2021, Special Town Meeting, Proposed Bylaw Amendment Article 12 Marijuana Establishments or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
I am struggling with this one hardcore. I'll second for discussion, but I am really struggling.
Okay, I think the point of this is that the facilities would be across the street on 122A, and they'd be going back and forth across 122A as opposed to being on one site. So there's...
So, right, my concern is the, and I need to, I would need to, I guess I need clarification. The way it reads is it's not just, I would almost rather, in this instance, I don't have any problem with it, but the way it's striking of this section to me reads is that forever and always, there's no, now there's no limit as to the number of LMEs that could go on a single parcel. And like I said, I would be happier if it was a, somehow could be a zoning exception in this one case and view it as a case by case. I feel like as a, I, I think I've been on record saying I'm in favor of the marijuana, but I feel like it needs to be done really well, and I feel like this is giving up a huge piece of control that we, of the town, that we kind of had promised the townspeople that we would have these checks and balances in, so it wasn't just this untethered free-for-all. And I worry that that's the way, the way this current recommend, zoning bylaw amendment reads is that we're heading down that road.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's interesting, Leah. I appreciate your concern, and I'm getting all kinds of concern about this article. So I particularly drafted this amendment myself, and I talked to attorneys, I talked with everybody about this. This is intended to be a very, very simple amendment. But you've got to remember right now that bylaw only allows for five marijuana facilities in the entire town of Rutland, period. That's the limit. And only one of those facilities can be a retail one, and that's already, we already, as you know, approved the host agreement, and that's going to be built across the street from that Rutland Plaza. That's the host one. There's, this, this one, as you remember, we approved cultivation right across the street. They're in that plaza, in the back part of that plaza to do cultivation. Right now, because of that little provision in there that frankly was supposed to be tied to something else they already pulled out of this language when they did it, says that only one host agreement can be on one parcel of land. So that means that this company, as you remember, we voted to approve the company and develop a host agreement for this company to do marijuana cultivation at that site. What this allows them to do is, if they wanted to do, and then they came back and they asked for a host agreement and were approved through the procurement process for the purpose of manufacturing. So right now, the way the language is drafted before the amendment basically makes them load the marijuana after cultivation into a truck, drive it across to the next parcel, unload it, and then do manufacturing in another parcel, which in my opinion is ridiculous and not a very good public safety issue to move marijuana from one facility to another for no real practical purpose. It doesn't change anything else. It doesn't allow a bunch more parcels to go on a particular site. Because you've got to remember, there's, there's only five total, and four are already effectively done. The marijuana retail, the cultivation and the product manufacturing, which I think is better for the town to have on one site. Then you've got the other cultivation one that, I don't know if it's moving forward or not. There's only one outstanding license or host agreement that could be gotten. But all this is designed, this whole amendment is designed to keep the company from having to pick up the marijuana from one site, move it across the street, and unload it. That's all this amendment does.
And if I may, like I said, in this instance, I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. I have a problem with the bylaw change making it so that if, because if the other cultivation, for some reason, doesn't end up moving forward, then essentially there are two that could also end up on one or all of these parcels, and then, and maybe that's fine, but I, I worry a little bit about just this blanket kind of, that it can be turned into a free-for-all, even though it's only five. Like I said, in this case, I, I think it makes sense, and I'm not arguing with that piece at all, but I do worry about the blanket openness of the, of the bylaw.
Well, I guess it, you know, there's, there's one host agreement that would have to come back to the Board of Selectmen if we negotiated. First of all, you'd have to do a procurement and go through the whole process to open up for that last one. And then the board could, at the time, the Board of Selectmen would have control over where that went and the location as part of the host agreement if they wanted to. And again, I agree, I think the other cultivation one, I don't know what's going to happen to it, but clearly they wouldn't take that host agreement and put it on the site with cultivation because it already has a cultivation site. So I, I guess I just don't see it as a real issue, but...
So was there any way to make it more specific to that, this particular situation?
Well, the reason that, when I talked to David George about this, the original way I was going to do this is to say no more than two on one site, but David thought that that might not hold up a court challenge because now you're saying that, you're defining two, and you're making that subjective for a particular reason for somebody, and he felt that that was discriminatory towards other people. So he said, David's recommendation was we should just eliminate that provision. And when I talked to Peter Crane about this, I guess Peter was on a subcommittee that worked on marijuana as part of the Planning Commission bylaw. Peter said that this provision really is, and standing on this document doesn't make sense because it was tied to something else they took out of the document when they did it. So, so he didn't think that this was, I think they were originally worried about having a whole bunch of marijuana facilities on one property and congestion of cars and stuff like that. But it was tied to something that the committee took out of the original marijuana bylaw, but...
So has this gone to the planning board zoning by law?
They're holding a public hearing on November 9th for it, yeah.
November 9th for this one?
Yeah. So, I mean, I, again, if we vote this down, all it means is we're going to allow them to have to move the marijuana from one site to another. To me, I just don't think that's a good public safety issue. But if it doesn't get passed, it's not the end of the world, but it's...
Well, I mean, I think we all agree that the reasoning for it, Peter, did you have a comment?
I think it's just my name was brought up, I don't want to speak up a little bit. Ron, I think I'm the one who told you that I thought that two would not stand at the court challenge because it is capricious, or at least on its face appears to be. And unless we could come up with a specific reasoning that was done at the court challenge, I thought that removing it is a better legal option than having a court challenge fail, which would, in effect, also remove that entire subsection.
I think that's what I was trying to explain, I mean, that as well.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to explain.
Having said that, oh, look, Dave's hand is also up. Oh, David, you're...
What's his name, doesn't take the wrong?
Now, what did you say that I, that I thought I had to comment on again? Because there was, there was stuff I don't want to bring up here.
It had tied to some future late town meeting.
That's it. It was, it was actually, the thing that was, there was an element of the bylaw that got removed during legal review, not by the committee itself. But even then, the notion of having, the notion of having to move property, the product from one site to another site is exactly what the intent of the bylaw committee, subcommittee at that time. So having to do it, I understand that you may not think that it makes sense, but it is practically speaking no different than having to move it in from another town. It is exactly the same, the exact same process to move the product.
What's the benefit to the town of moving the product from one site to another?
What's the problem to the town of having it from one site to another?
To me, it's a public safety issue. Why don't I take marijuana, that type of product and move it? For what reason? I don't know.
But I say again, it's exactly the same as having to move it from another town. I don't, I don't see a logical difference between...
Well, I mean, I see in this instance going back and forth across Main Street because I brought up in a lot of these meetings, I have a concern just accessing that strip mall is a nightmare, it's like a big open field, and that's a busy, curvy section of Main Street. So I have a concern about the safety in that area. So going back and forth would be a concern. It's not like traveling, I mean, it'd actually be better if it was, you know, five miles away, than there'd be just driving down the road. But I think zipping back and forth across that street is a concern. Dave has had his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Just two, two points here. So, Peter, thank you for the clarification regarding a legal challenge. That's correct. That's something which you brought up. I did not bring that up at any time on this matter. Number two, this is not across the street, we're talking about the same side of the street. One entity has requested two host agreements, one for cultivation, one for manufacturing on the same side of the street. The one across the street is the retail one, which is a totally separate entity.
So, David, what are they moving it across? The parcels, are they right next to each other? What's the...
So the Plaza, the Plaza, the Plaza as well, the Sims Building, the Sims parcel. So one entity has obtained a host agreement to do cultivation on the Sims property, in the Sims building. As an offshoot of the cultivation process, there is a waste product that is generated, and that waste product apparently has some value, and that's where the manufacturing comes into play, to realize the value of the waste product. So what's cultivated in the Sims building, that same entity would also like to manufacture it preferably on the same parcel. But at this point in time, the only way to do that would be to create another parcel on the same side of the street. So the Blair property has space to create another parcel with a building to be constructed. That was one alternative. But it's one entity, two host agreements, one's cultivation, and one is manufacturing.
So effectively, David, we're still making them load this stuff onto a truck and moving it, I don't know, 50 yards to the next parcel, right? Is that what we're talking about?
I'm not making the case for this one way or the other. I'm just clarifying regarding that it's on one side of the street, and it's one entity that has two host agreements. I'm not in a position to argue the marriage law on consciousness.
It's a retail one, right? That's a different, but we're talking about one entity that has two hosting licenses.
Right.
And parcels, I guess he would have to take a parcel that's right next to it, try to subdivide it, create a new parcel, and then move the product from here to there. And parcels, I guess he would have to take a parcel that's right next to it, try to subdivide it, create a new parcel and then move the product from here to there. I just don't get the point of moving a product.
Well, I mean, my initial concern was I thought it was the one going across the street.
I I'm not.
So that that was my, this main safety. I don't see as much of a safety issue if it's right, if it's going down the street or it's going, you know, fifty feet or five miles.
Yeah, I don't know what the the values are. We're gonna do is add expenses.
Public hearings is November ninth. I'd say we table it until after that, but that's just me.
Don't make any recommendations, me? Yeah, place it, but don't make no recommendations. What are you thinking?
My whole thing is you gotta wait till what the public says, cause the public might rewrite this and we're gonna have to revisit it, so.
I I, if I may?
Yeah.
I I kind of am agreeing with Karen is not not even like, just ta, I I agree, table it. We don't, it's not only not making a recommendation, we're not even. When do we have, will the ninth be before we have to post to the meeting?
We have to post it on the fourth, right?
Yep.
We have to post it on the fourth, right?
But why does everything wait to like ten days before the town meeting to to finally get public hearings and all that? It's like we're constantly after the eight ball. I I don't understand why there's this big rush because now we're gonna place this and it could change greatly.
So the only thing I think is, I mean, the town entered into this company for two host agreement, went through the whole procurement process. They thought it was, I guess, beneficial to the town, the town voted for this, so they, the town, the board of selectmen voted for a host agreement for the cultivation and a host agreement for the manufacturing with the thought, I think, is that this would benefit the town in some way to the three percent money we're gonna get from it.
Without a doubt. I I don't have any issue with that, but.
So I don't know why we wanna.
We're making changes to say how they're gonna move it from one to the other. Uh I mean.
Well, because it, you know, I don't know if it makes sense if we get three percent of the gross, three percent, I mean, I I don't know.
But the.
I still don't understand the purpose of moving it from one location.
So but you, this is put on by the board of selectmen?
I put it on and and talked to Lyndon about it.
No, we, yeah, we're just.
It doesn't, it could be just me as the sponsor, it could be, I.
He didn't, I mean, my understanding was across the street.
But I'm saying it hasn't come, didn't come from the committee that wrote the thing.
No, it came directly from me.
And it didn't come from the planning board.
Right, came from me.
And I have another question, if I may.
Right. Yeah.
Currently, if it were to be on one property, would it be in the same building? Would they add in addition to that building or would they still be constructing a separate building? I'm not sure.
It's my understanding it's all in one building. If if this amendment were to pass, the cultivation and the manufacturing would all occur in one building.
But and if not, it still would be on this, I mean, the the current plan, I think what we approved was for the the parcels both on the same side of the street. So I just wanna make sure clarify, for my own clarification, that we're taking the crossing one twenty-two A out of this equation entirely, no matter what. It's currently either on one parcel in the same building or in two adjacent parcels, um and likely two separate buildings.
Correct.
So basically by not, by not doing it with, sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I'm still, I. No, I was gonna say, I'm still struggling a little bit. I I just feel like I know how contentious that there's very strong feelings for and against marijuana in town. And in the the forecamp getting it, I think we tried as a town to be mindful of um keeping it as, you know, up and up as possible. And I I still have concerns about just a blanket open free for all. I I with the way the current change reads. I, that's me personally.
So can we not make the exemption for this one scenario as opposed to doing it?
Well, that's what the 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 problem with that is what Peter is suggesting. If if you try to say that you can put two on the same property, he thinks that that may not hold up to a court challenge because you're specifically doing it for that one company. So that's why David said, uh Peter suggested to me that it should be to strike that whole section if you're gonna do it. That's that's the point.
I mean, it looks like we're just doing it to be for the convenience of this one person, so I don't really. I I mean, maybe it seemed logical to make it shorter, but that's really not our problem. I mean, so we're just doing it for the convenience of of this one project.
So from my, from my point of view, for putting on, that really wasn't my reason to make it more convenient. To me, I just had a very difficult time seeing the logic of making this company load it up on trucks and move it, you know, fifty feet or a hundred feet, whatever it is, away and unload it. To me, I mean, we entered into these host agreements thinking that we're developing a relationship between that and the company doing it. So that's the way I looked at it, but you know, they're basically gonna have to still do that. They're still gonna.
No.
No, you're gonna keep it as a.
Just give it all one stability.
How are they gonna transport it between this, in even in the same building? How are they gonna transport it anyway?
Right.
Are they not gonna take certain safety measures because they're in the same building? That's wrong. Are they gonna not look, are they going to use internal non-public hallways? I don't know. We haven't seen a site plan and what, and I don't know that a site plan with that, with doors between LMEs would pass site rock plan review. I'm not in a position to say yea or nay. I just ask questions here. I don't see that if it, that if they had, I don't see the difference, quite honestly, in the process necessary to move within a building and with and a- across two buildings, two parcels, five miles. I don't see a practical difference in implementation and transportation.
So.
Not Ca- Carol had to.
I ju- I just wanna know, i- is this, they're saying that we have cultivated, we're gonna blanketly cultivation and and manufacturing? We're going to allow the two entities, the two processes in one building going forward?
Facility, yes.
If this passes.
If this passes, correct.
If that passes.
It means that every business, every marijuana business could be in a single parcel. That is the side effect of passing this amendment.
That that, yeah, that would be true if we didn't already have a retail establishment being developed across the street. The these two, we know, we agreed, host agreement for these two. We only have two more licenses, period. One is already out and predicted at a farm that I don't think is gonna move and one is unknown of and we don't have any knocking on the door for it. So I highly don't believe it's gonna have any real impact, even if that third one went on the same site. I don't see that as as having much value or change, you know?
I mean, since I've been in this town, I've constantly heard that the 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 town is attempting to get more businesses into the town. And here's a business who's trying to and by not doing this, we're kinda putting up a small barrier that they're gonna have to create a whole new building for a separate process that really isn't necessary. So it just seems like an unnecessary barrier for something that the town is trying to get. I understand it's marijuana, so it's a little bit, you know, that's where the whole stigma comes down.
This was always in the original agreement, so they understood that when the agreement was.
Okay, fair enough.
So my question is, is is the state, I mean, the state can, must have seven thousand pages of rules for these things.
They do.
Yeah, the state, it is my understanding, and I haven't heard every regulation, that the state has no requirement, has nothing that would forbid putting multiple establishments in a single parcel. Which, by the way, and this will come up at town meeting, uh is different than alcohol.
But actually, actually, your point is an interesting one, because there's a whole bunch of requirements for each building and half the product. There's cameras and everything else. So this company, it's not just a matter of the cost of moving it. They would have to put cameras in the new building. They would have to do all the security features in the second building that they put in the first building. So there's a lot of potential costs that would be involved in having the two buildings. In truth, I don't care. I mean, it's not like, this is not something I'm, you know.
If you're adding on, it doesn't matter whether there's a wall between it or not a wall between it, you know? If there's space between it, you're still gonna have to set up your space.
And I just wanna be clear, like, the current host agreements are for the two separate parcels. So it's not like they're coming in and expecting it to be on one. I mean, yes, it would be a pleasant surprise for them if it were on one, but I, they're not under any, they shouldn't be any un- under any false pretense that it's going to be in one because the host agreement were very clear that it was for two separate parcels.
But just to be clear, they they did come and approach me about this change because they thought it was kinda pointless for them to rent the second facility right next to the facility, so that, you know, they they themselves came and and said to me, you know, this this is why it doesn't make sense. And from my point of view, I just had the the transportation issue, but they would like to see this changed cause it, to them, it's just a whole bunch of expenses for what's kinda silly to move it, you know, fifty feet, you know, but. Again, I I'm not, I don't wanna get into a big thing about this, cause.
The safety thing across the street was, originally that was.
That's what my, that's my understanding.
Well, I know, it's always explained, right? So I agree with you that that's not a concern, so.
Hey Leah, I was wrong. I couldn't stay off camera today.
I feel better, Peter.
So so uh Leah, you seconded it for discussion. I I don't know if we're ready to.
Well, we have to do something, cause it has to, you know, I don't know.
So when it has, the warrant has to be posted by the.
Fourth. Fourth.
Fourth, which is.
A week from today.
Next week, right?
Right, a week from today.
And the hearing's not until the ninth.
Great. Has planning board, I I was on planning board the other night and I think there was conversation around this, but I don't know that they had any, um I think it sa- sounded like there were a lot of questions still that they had with regards to this. So we don't have any input even from planning um or the bylaw subcommittee or anyone that worked on the original bylaw.
So let me kinda fill you in on at least my conversation with the chairman and with David. So the the planning commission did not intend to recommend this article from the planning commission. The concern expressed to me was that marijuana is controversial and, you know, let them do their own petition on this if they wanna do it. And they're gonna have a public hearing and see what happens at the public hearing. But the the planning board didn't have any intention of sponsoring this this particular article, just to be clear.
So you could take this off here and there and if something comes up and it has to be done, it could be done at another town meeting.
It'd have to be, they can't petition, it's too late to petition places, so it'd have to be.
No, he means at the next meeting.
At the summer meeting or.
That's what I'm saying, at the next meeting, yeah.
We don't have to, I mean, we can let it stand and not have a opinion, right?
You can place it, but not do a recommendation.
If we place it, it gives the impression that we're supporting it because we're actually between the town administration and the board.
And I have a question.
And this is gonna take a, it's gonna be a lot of discussion if we don't.
Obviously.
Yeah, so if we can't agree here, I can't imagine on the floor.
And the thing is, is there's nothing worse than at a town meeting to have placed something and then we say, we recommend no action. Cause that just is like, well, why?
I mean, I personally, I don't feel that, you know, the planning board hasn't taken the position, the hearing hasn't happened. I don't think there's enough information, in my opinion, so.
And I have a question. If we were to place it and, because it's zoning and I believe it requires two thirds. So say we place it with all of these un- unanswered unsureties now and it fails, we can't bring it back for, I think there's a sunset clause for failed, for failed um articles.
Two years. Two years.
So it could potentially be very detrimental if we don't have the information that we need to make a a a a very convincing argument for, then I feel like we could potentially, since it requires two thirds vote, be setting us up to have it be never brought up again for three years.
Right, and especially about with the hearing having not even taken place yet, it's gonna make it difficult to discuss.
So could could we not place this?
Mm-hmm.
And then if if the establishments, if the LMEs wanted to go and ask for.
Well, they're gonna go, they're already going to the planning board meeting for what it's worth. I don't know that they'll change anything. So I'm, I don't, again, I I wanna be clear, I don't care one way or another. I just thought that made sense.
She's got, with the second emotion, then you're not.
Right.
Yeah.
Make a visit.
I mean, I'm, I'm like I said, I personally would like to see a little bit more support from some of the co, and and hear what happens at the hearing before we go and place something, but.
Yeah, and I think, I think the other thing that may, I think Leah may have mentioned it at some point, you know, it's still, it's still new to us. Let's see how things play out a little bit for, I mean, we haven't even gotten one establishment in place yet.
I gotta tell you, I was amazed, because I thought this was like this minor thing. And even the town clerk, when she read it and and the assistant town clerk when they read it, they thought that this was gonna allow much more license. I mean, the interpretation of this thing has been unbelievably way different than really what it says. But so everybody is interpreting it in ways that scare me, because it's not designed for that.
Right.
And it's, you know, it's, it's.
Well, on on the floor at the town meeting, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be yours.
And I think that if we, if we allow the residents to have an establishment in place, see how we get along with that establishment as a town.
Well, they would have, they would have two. They're gonna lease two different properties. I mean, the person who's gonna benefit is the company that's leasing the property to them. Cause they're gonna have two, you know, they're gonna have a lease for one and then they lease for the other, so it's just added costs, you know?
Right, but they can bring it back in another time if they.
They could try, yeah, depending upon how they decide to move forward.
Cause I, cause to Leah's point, I'd rather not have this fail and then be stuck for two years, so.
Yeah, it's two years.
Tip.
So you've made.
All right, I am going to rescind my motion to place Article twenty-one.
All right, do you wanna make a new motion?
Does she agree?
Not, please.
Not the board.
Well, Leah, what's it for discussion, I think she has.
Well, if you, if you don't place it, then it automatically is not.
I mean, Leah, are you are you fine with rescinding?
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I conceptually like the idea. I just feel like it's rushed and there's not enough um information, you know, for this one instance, I like it. I can't say that across the board, I would support it um for whatever. So, yeah, I think rescinding it and providing ample opportunity for town feedback um is important.
All right, so you ma, are you making a motion to uh remove Article twenty-one?
I'm making a motion to remove Article twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Whitman seconds.
And a roll call?
Fanoid eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye? All right, Article twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. Going forward, we're gonna have to renumber the articles. As you read the articles, just renumber them one down.
Oh, jeez, we gotta do that now. You waiting till almost nine o'clock?
I know, but it's twenty-two will be twenty-one, twenty-two will be twenty-one.
At least it was only.
We were confused when the numbers were right.
Well, don't number them too far ahead, you'll do something else come from there.
Well, yeah, that's, you never know. I was hoping we wouldn't have to do this, but that is what it is.
But I mean, it won't be confusing, cause we 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 voted to remove twenty-one. If we start saying these other numbers, wouldn't she just fix it when we place the actual warrant?
Well, I think when you make the articles, you're gonna read them as article numbers. You should give them the right article numbers while we read them.
Yeah, that's.
Will that work fine in the minutes clarified?
Yeah.
Removing twenty-one and then voting on twenty-one?
It's a new twenty-one. Revise twenty-one, huh?
Um before I read this, it's Article, is it Article X as in a placeholder or Article ten?
I think, David, that will now be Article twenty-one in the X spot, is that correct?
This X.
Uh yes, Article X was a placeholder until a article number was a, was assigned. Hopefully, it'll be assigned. Once it's assigned, then we'll we'll change Article X to whatever the article is, assuming that it's approved tonight.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm right on this, David. So when you're referring to in this motion you gave me, by adding to Article, I gave, the number's gonna be twenty-one, you're talking about the articles we're voting on tonight, not some article in a bylaw somewhere, is that correct?
Ri- right, as, so so in honor to place the article for zoning, the 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 model has been to refer to a handout. So the handout is the title of the zoning article. And the ar, the article, which is the Article X, is the article as it'll appear on the town warrant.
Okay.
The actual bylaw reference is embedded in the language of the warrant article itself. So the actual modification would be to Article three, the use regulations, section eight residential district, to allow a new subsection F accessory dwelling unit. That's the bylaw reference. Article X for this purpose is the warrant reference.
But it is, but we know it's gonna be twenty-one.
Both of those X's are gonna be replaced by twenty-one.
Right.
That's the way David's explaining it.
Adding to Article twenty-one, I don't think he's right.
See, I was kinda confused by it too.
To see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding to Article three, isn't it? By adding to Article three, use regulations, section eight, blah, 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 accessory dwelling unit as set forth in the handout.
What Article three?
It's Article three of the zoning bylaw.
That's what, that's what I was thinking. That's why I got confused by it.
So I think both Article X's.
Article three is a typo. That's not the language that we provided. Article three is, if you look at the handout itself that the board has, if you look at the planning board's recommendations, it's Article X, not Article three, the last part of that.
It's the attachment to that.
Twenty-two.
Not twenty-one. He's referring to the art, the handout, and Article twenty-one is in your packet. So it's the, this article, and it counts, right now it says twenty-two, but it's gonna be twenty-one. So you're trying to refer, this this article is simply gonna refer to the handout, which you have right now is Article twenty-two. That will have to be changed to Article twenty-one, too.
I I don't have a number for it yet, because it has not.
Well, the article on the, oh, I'm sorry, that's marijuana establishment, that's my, that's.
That's why I just have a placeholder, so once that's.
I'm sorry, Article twenty-two, you're right, you don't have it on there.
Article X becomes whatever.
You didn't put an article number on yet the handout, I gotta, yep.
Yes, yes.
What do you think, Peter? I I I, that's why I was asking the question, cause I was a little confused.
All right.
This is where he's referring to that stand out.
So David, I guess my question is, this is going to be a brand new article in zoning bylaw, yes?
Yes, that's correct. It's gonna go in the residential section. There'd be a new Article F in the residential section for this bylaw.
A new?
I don't think you have to do that, though, and name that that spot. It could just go into the section. The attorney, you can do that as a technical change. I don't think you have to.
Well, no, he's not adding, he so, so you're not actually adding an entirely new article, you're adding a subsection to Article ten, to Article three.
That's correct. Article three is the zoning bylaw reference. Article three is the use regulation section. Um subsection, section eight is the residential district section, and this would be a new section F, which would be for accessory dwelling units.
Right, so the first reference in in the in the warrant article to Article X should be add to Article three, use regulations.
No, Article X is gonna become what, whatever is assigned as the warrant article tonight.
No, no, because you're not adding to that warrant article, you're adding to the zoning bylaw. You're adding to Article three of zoning.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's why the first, it doesn't make sense to say by adding to the warrant, use regulation section eight. That's not what you're doing. You're adding to Article three of the zoning bylaw, so to amend the zo, town zoning bylaw by adding to Article three, section eight, a new subsection F.
Actually, if I could, if you look at the, if you look at the information provided to the board, the planning board's report, the information I provided was, is as follows. Article X, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding to Article three, use regulations, section eight residential dis, residence district, a new subsection F, accessory dwelling unit, as set forth in the handout entitled November eighteen, twenty twenty-one, special town meeting, proposed zoning bylaw accessory dwelling unit, Article X, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action in relation thereto.
Okay, so Da, so David, the, the article you presented was changed before it was put into the select board's handout.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The first article is, is called X in the handout when it should be Article three, as you pointed out.
He just lost me there.
You lost me, Peter.
He read, he read putting in, in the three here, he doesn't realize it is.
He doesn't have this, he has his.
But he gave me the language, so.
I don't know.
His language was given to him, so.
Yeah, this is the thing.
But I, so.
So what I can tell you is that's supposed to be Article three.
Right, but what, but I'm not clear on is the X at the end, what's, that's what.
That is where it's supposed to be replaced both here in the handout and here in the article as Article twenty, what will be now twenty-one.
So this will be twenty-one.
Yes.
The first one is three, the second one's twenty-one?
Yes, Ar, Roman numeral three for the first one, and the second one is Article twenty-one.
Yeah.
Got it.
Alright, Carol.
Am I good?
Alright, she's, she's gonna make the motion.
And you didn't think it was great, that's why I was like.
I know.
But he told me that a couple of times.
I told you if we changed these article numbers, we were gonna, we haven't even gone through this.
I was hoping we wouldn't even have to get into that, but.
I have a question.
Can I have a question, man?
David on board with all these questions?
Go ahead.
Hi, actually, the other thing that needs to be changed is because as the way Dave put it in originally, it says as set forth in a handout, and that got changed, I believe in the document you're seeing as a document, but that document word should be changed back to handout.
Should I just read this?
It is changed to handout.
It says handout in the article.
Oh, is it? Okay, I didn't, cause my copy doesn't say that.
Yeah, I had to fix that, yeah, no, I had to fix that.
Okay, it's time, it's time you have the question.
So, so again, this is something where we haven't had the public hearing yet, but we're gonna be voting on it.
Actually, the public hearing was held last Tuesday.
Yeah.
The public hearing was held on Tuesday, Tom.
What's the one, that you just said something about coming up next?
The marijuana.
That's right.
I understand that one. Schedule for the, for the night.
But it was said that something else was coming up.
No, the accessory, the, the accessory dwelling was held.
It was opening close on Tuesday.
So there's a recommendation of, of positive?
Yes.
That's correct.
Alright.
Well, the planning board didn't vote a recommendation on this, did they, David?
No, they did.
No, the planning board has a report on this, the planning board voted favorably, that information was submitted to, to the select board today, and that's the planning board's recommendation.
They did?
That's this sheet, this in here.
So should I put on the warrant that the planning board voted favorably for this?
Yes, you have the planning board's report to that effect, yes.
Okay.
Alright, Joe, Carol.
I wanna make a motion to place Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend the to, the town's zoning bylaw by adding to Article three, use regulations, section eight, residence district, a new subsection F, accessory dwelling unit as set forth in a handout titled November eighteen, twenty twenty-one, special town meeting, proposed zoning bylaw, accessory dwelling unit, Article twenty-one. As on file with the town clerk, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a second?
Waitman seconds.
No, roll call.
Benoid eye?
Waitman eye.
Nichols eye? Tom.
I'm thinking.
Wake up.
No, I was, I haven't.
I know.
I make a motion that the, uh, finance board recommend favorably on Article twenty-one as presented, printed and amended, well, but we.
Well, I read it correctly, so.
It's not amended, cause we just put it in.
Yep, okay, as, as written and presented.
Presented.
Second.
Any conversation, any questions? Pete? Pete, I can't see ya.
Sorry?
I can't see, okay, I can't see him, okay, sorry, I was like, wait a second, that's a problem, I can't see him.
Well, there he is.
Yeah.
There he is.
Tommy?
Uh, Rochella eye.
Benoid eye.
Winica eye.
Nerwold eye.
I make a motion that select board recommends favorably Article twenty-one as read.
Second, do we have a second?
Waitman, waitman seconds.
Roll call.
Benoid eye?
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye?
I make a motion to. What to say?
Article twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
To place, the bless the word, to place Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash, to pay for the development of a risk resilience assessment and resulting plan for the town drinking water supply system, including all incidental or related costs, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Discussion?
Defer to DPD Director, sir.
Uh, this is a federal requirement, it's, 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 uh, we're actually late getting it done. The money will bring in an engineer and a scientist to produce the document as required by the federal.
Resilience is a big thing these days in water. Uh, Leah, do you have any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we should start giving them some requirements and giving them some more money to do this, so.
It, um.
Federal and state mandates.
That law, um, that, the Flint, Michigan mess, developed, there was a law that was developed in twenty thirteen that required a lot of this stuff, but it's just getting down to the smaller systems, that's all.
EPA has been, is having a workshop on that, it was canceled this week, did you know that, on resilience, well, it's gonna be in November now. Alright, uh, roll call.
Benoid eye?
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye?
I make a motion that the finance board recommends favorably on Article twenty-two as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Come on, Tommy, you must have some discussion.
I, I want to say a lot of things, but.
Okay, Pete? Okay, Tommy?
I keep driving across up and up. Rochella eye.
Benoid eye.
Winica eye.
Nerwold eye.
I make a motion that the select board recommends favorably Article twenty-two is read.
Do I have a second?
Waitman seconds.
So this, this is, um, a DEP, I, I heard that, uh, that person that lives in town, he'll be speaking at, at the EPA on resilience, and he was the one I had recommended that you guys meet with.
Did you have that, this meeting with him, or did you just gotta remember, he emailed about the guy that, that lived in New York, would be involved in this or was tied into this, do you remember that?
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Okay, um.
I still recommend that you meet with him, cause he knows a lot about the state DEP programs and stuff, so.
Just go back in your emails, Joe, look for an email from me, and it's.
I can send it to you.
There's two, there's two distinct, yeah, would you please, there's two distinct recommendations by, uh, one was, we were looking at, when we were talking about the water company we were placing, place that was the one.
R cap.
And this was the secondary one that he gave us.
You've been saying that for, I don't know.
Yeah, I've been saying that for many, many.
It's been a while, it's gotta be over two months since you've sent it, right, it's been a while.
No, I've been saying it for years, nobody.
Well, the email, the email.
If they would've done the, the thirty thousand dollar study for free, but that's okay, but anyway, we'll go on.
Yeah.
Just send it to, send it to me, second, right, it's gotta be two months since you sent it.
It's getting late.
We'll do, roll, roll call.
Benoid eye?
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye?
I make a motion that we place Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote for to, to transfer a sum of money from certified water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash, to pay for the development of a written drought management plan that follows American Water Works Association Drought Management Planning Guidance, AWWA twenty oh two, for the town drinking water supply system, including all incidental and or related costs, or take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Discussion?
Can we get this one for you?
Um, AWI has a lot of conferences as well, I was trying to think of when the next one's coming up, have you ever sat in with any of their workshops, or?
Sorry.
Have you ever sat in with any of the AWI's workshops?
I have, but this is different, this is, um, we signed a consent order with DEP, and this is required, in that consent order, it's a court order, the town, town agreed to. It allowed us to take more water out of the reservoir, which helped us refinance our water system, get it to more, uh, physically sound, so it's in our best interest.
Yeah. Have you worked with Water Works Association in the past?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, but this is, um, DEP pushed this when we signed the consent order, because I would remind everybody here, we only have one source of water in town right now.
Right.
That's really where this comes from.
Alright, anything else? Roll call.
Benoid eye?
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye?
The one's always been good from there, though.
As long as you can get it.
It's very good, yeah.
Massachusetts Water Management Act was the do, the law that limited how much we could take out of the reservoir, that's what put the, um, moratorium in place in the first place, so.
I know, it's our pond, it's our town, and they tell us what to do.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that, this is Article twenty-three, right?
Yep.
That the finance board recommends favorably on Article twenty-three as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Pete? Tommy?
Rochella eye.
Benoid eye.
Winica eye.
Nerwold eye.
I make a motion that the board selectmen recommend favorably Article twenty-three as read.
Do I have a second?
Waitman seconds.
And roll call?
Benoid eye?
Waitman eye.
And Nichols eye?
I make a motion that we place Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash, to purchase a new pump assembly for, and rebuild one of the pumps at the Miles Road Sewer Pump Station, including all incidental and related costs, or in, take any action in relation thereto.
Do I have a second?
Waitman seconds, I have a couple comments.
Yeah.
If I may, um, this has been one of my things, kind of my concern, as we accept more and more of the sewer pump stations, um, in town, is that, I don't think currently we really have a, a plan to replace, um, repair and replace these pumps as they age, so right now, we have the funds available in water and sewer free cash, but going forward, I would like to have a conversation maybe, Joe, about ways that we can, um, have a, a plan, a dedicated kind of manage, capital management plan for the pump stations that are kind of all over town, that are, are going to at some point have an end of life.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, that's been a going concern about the.
What do you have? We have a capital plan for wastewater.
Capital plan, yeah.
Yeah.
And we do cover some of the pump station concerns, plus.
So it's, you think it's adequately funded to, so why are we paying for free cash here?
Um, the water and sewer.
Water and sewer free cash.
Yeah, right. Oh, okay.
Right.
Oh, we have a, that, that's two separate issues, what Leah said, do, do you have a capital plan in place to slowly adjust to repair components in the sewer pump stations?
I, I think, Leah, were you thinking of funding as well, right, or?
It would be funded.
Not just a plan, but funding.
We have, we have some funding in place, but you, the funding is for actual long-term capital plans, so you had a pump station, um, with two pumps that basically failed.
Right.
Uh, we, to try and offset that cost, we've had, have historically over the last two years, built a water sewer reserve, so we can cover these emergency costs. We use that money, so we're going after the, to use the water sewer free cash to cover the shortfall.
Right, and I, and I think the ongoing concern is that when we are accepting these roads, that there's an expense that's gonna be down the road, and how can we find ways to try to cover that more upfront, so that the town isn't on the hook when these start to fail and, you know, going down the road. So in other words, I, I don't know.
I think it's a just, it's a discussion.
Some kind of fee associated with the, with the streets to make sure that there's sufficient funding going forward, but.
I will look, but I, I think that came up with DEP before, and you can't do that.
Yeah, was that where you were going, Leah?
Yeah, just something that, I mean, we know that most, like, the center of town where the trunk line is, is a high point, so a lot of, especially the newer, um, subdivisions and everything that have pump houses, ha, require pump houses to pump up to the trunk line or to a, another, another feeder line. And so I worry that as the town continues to take ownership of these pump stations, that a lot of them have been within the fairly recent past, that there's going to come a time that it's quite possible that a lot of them fail in a very short amount of time, and that's going to be a significant expense, that I don't necessarily think is, uh, sustainable for the town to just pay out of water sewer free cash, and what, how can we work to avoid that?
I think we should look like, even like some kind of warranty, so that, you know, that it's, it's gonna, if it fails within a certain period of time, that there's some ownership to, I, I don't know. I, I don't know the answer either, but I, I, I see where the concern is.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern as well, we had, it may affect me, you and Carol had some serious discussion about this, and I just don't think under state law, there's any way to fix it to, to charge a developer for future costs that relate to either pump stations or roads or any of that stuff, but I've never seen it done before, so.
Don't let them build like that.
I understand the concern, but.
Well, no, it, you, you're allowed to use sewer pump stations as part of expanding your sewer system, it's an accepted means of construction under TR something, they have a regulation for it.
I think, I, I'd love, I'd love to, as, as I say, I'd like to be educated and also, you know, give my two cents, because I think, I heard something like a million dollars to replace one of those pump stations.
Oh, all of that.
So.
So.
And we, and we, every time we build, now, these, these subdivisions now.
Now, Miles Road, that pump station's twenty-five years old, so you're gonna have major components fail, it is what it is.
Tommy, I'm sorry.
No, so, uh, then, I, my, I got, I got two questions, one question is, are, are specifications that we give to developers to put these pumps to, are they, are the specs upgraded enough to make them of a quali, you know, a good quality, to, to work better and, and last longer?
I, I don't think you're gonna get, um, a sewer pump station to go past twenty-five years without making major repairs, I, I just don't.
Okay, but when they put them in, are they, are their specs up to snuff to make sure they're good quality and there, and is, what should be in there is in there?
I believe so, yes.
We gotta meet state standards, so the answer's gotta be us.
Yeah, with state standards, or do we go a step above state standards, because thing is, you can do bargain basement, or you can do one step above.
I think it sets, I think, Joe, quickly, remember, the state sets the standards of what they are, and you can't go above or below them, you gotta meet them where they're.
And that's what these other, like Holden or other towns that have pump stations, or do the same thing?
True is, the issue is true statewide, see, the, the issue, and Carol makes a, a very good point, the issue is when the town takes over a road at the end of a subdivision, or takes over a project, that the, the town has to eat the long-term cost of the road, of everything from plow, and to repairing, to everything, once we take it, the same is true of a pump station. Once we take it, we take it, now it's built for twenty-five years or whatever, but at some point in time, those are gonna go bad, now, roads are charged to the whole town because all the whole town uses them, so it comes out of your regular general fund liability, sewers, because it's an enterprise fund, it's paid for out of the sewer, all the sewer users pay for it.
I know that every, every three months, I know that, every three months, I know that.
And not just the subdivision, the whole sewer line.
I understand.
Tommy loves water and sewer.
I've never seen anything different that's statewide, so.
So my second question is, um, it, it, well, it seems like it was yesterday, but two or three years ago, three or four years ago, I know when Gary was still here, he talked quite a bit about Devro had a bunch of inflow, and has that all been taken out and been verified? I mean, I know in your report, you said that there's a lot of flow coming from Devro, is there inflow and infiltration taken out?
As far as I know, yes, I mean, I read the report, and the analysis and repairs made at Devro, but that predates me.
No, I understand that, I'm, I'm asking, do we know that all that water that was coming from leaks is gone, so that we don't have so much flow?
As far. As far as I know, yes, but I would caution you that as other portions of the system age, leaks come up all the time.
I know, but we, you, you, we're paying for inflow and infiltration repairs in our bills every single day.
Right.
What I'm asking is, are they taking care of theirs up there, so that it's, it's not going into the system?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
So back to the other question from Leah, if you don't mind if I get that, we have, um, our capital plan was a five-year plan, it's roughly a million dollars. We spent so far, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand on II work, there are some pump station evaluations and improvements in the, in that million dollar fee. Plus, we've been, like I just mentioned earlier, we have reserves put aside for emergency repairs in sewers. I'm pretty sure we've used all of the emergency dollars we had in sewers already on a couple of the key repairs, so I went, um, to use free. So I went, um, to use free cash to, um, basically replace the pumps at Miles Road Station. I checked before I came to this meeting, and free cash for water and sewer is estimated nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I, I don't think it's a big deal breaker.
I do, I do. I think if, every one of those numbers is a big deal.
So this, this is just replacement? Are we good? Do a roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
Nichols, aye? Now you guys can argue amongst yourselves, and I'm still.
I make a motion that the Finance Board recommends favorably on Article twenty-four as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is recognized. Cabinet Improvement Committee has already approved this article, or recommended this article.
Pete?
Rashala, aye.
Oda.
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommend favorably Article twenty-four as written.
Do a second.
Waitman, seconds.
Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
I make a motion that we place Article twenty-five to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash to the FY twenty twenty-two Water and Sewer Enterprise Budget, approved under Article eleven of the June five, twenty twenty-one town meeting for an FY twenty of, twenty twenty-two Water Operations Reserve for Continued Updates to the Water Filtration Facility, or take any action in relation thereto.
Have a second.
Waitman, seconds.
This is for Joe.
Uh, sure. Um, I don't know, hopefully everyone here is aware, um, earlier this spring, we lost our entire water staff. And we had to bring in our engineer to run our water treatment facility, um, and make several upgrades to that plant to get it current. We just finished, um, rehiring a new staff, um, which is a big hurdle for us. Um, we have three, three new water operators at our plant, um, and we're running the plant roughly seventy percent of the time. In a perfect world, we would have, um, had an engineer come in and evaluate the whole facility and come up with a set of plans and specifications to make updates. That facility's also twenty-five years old. We didn't have that option. Uh, we found that there were a lot of items that needed updating and procedures that needed to be changed out. So we had to do that at the same time we had the engineer in there running the plant. They're not done yet. They still identified several repairs. I think I sent the recent memo from the subcontract we have in there now. And the money we said that I just asked you to authorize is to go into the water reserve so that we have money in place to continue updating the facility. Do you have any questions?
I, I don't know that our cap, they may do those type of assessments, but we need to talk to them and see if they, or have the ability. I think they have an engineer on staff to provide certain, so it's worth having a conversation with them.
I did talk to them about getting the operator, and they were helpful with getting someone who wanted to get into the field.
What about the assessment? Did you talk to them about that?
No, I, I had to go before the state, and I'm confident with the engineer I have in place now.
Okay. I mean, I mean, they're a national organization that does it across the country. They probably, if they have an engineer, they probably have the ability as well. All right, any other discussion?
Is there a cost to that, or is that some?
I, I don't, I don't know if that might be one of their technical assistant type services, but we'd have to check and see if those.
Yeah, I only have the question, but I have a question. How does this relate to the, didn't we appropriate a pretty good chunk of money about a year and a half or two years ago to do repairs there?
We did.
I think with the filters.
Yeah.
The filter tanks, I think, believe were redone.
They were, yep.
So how does this relate to any of that?
It's separate, distinct. I'll give you an example. Um, we had to, to be able to run the facility, I had to get a contractor operator in from Weston Sampson. They had to shadow the existing operator for over a month so that they knew how to run the facility. So I asked, I asked some questions about why are we having so much trouble getting people off the street? Because people came from as far as Andover to run our plant, and Methuen. They had to get operators from all over the Commonwealth. And, and the person next to me said, well, you see up there on the wall, that's a pH meter. I says, okay, yep, I've seen that. I saw that in a lab when I went to school a million years ago. Most places, they replace those every five years. Yours is original to the building from nineteen ninety-seven, and is highly inaccurate. We have to do this work by hand. There's little things like that all over the facility that need to be updated. Those are separate from the tanks. When the tanks were done, they actually, um, the manifold ruptured, and we lost control of the media and had to actually take the tanks offline. The tanks have the ability to produce roughly five hundred gallons per day, so we have three of them so we can do a million and a half a day. So at one point, when the tanks failed, and we moved that money from an existing article to replace the tank or rebuild the tanks, we were down to one filter a day, which is not the best place to be. We had to, we just basically couldn't make enough water. So that's, I hope that gives you some insight of the, the big differences between the two. And the other thing I'm gonna caution everybody here, when you go to the Commonwealth and you say to them, hey, we basically have a water emergency. We have nobody here to run our plant. We have no way to produce water legally. They come in, they walk through, they look at everything, and they flag all of this stuff. So you, it's not just as simple as, as going in and saying, oh, you know, we could probably update this, we could probably update that. We were under a microscope, and we still are. I hope that gives you some better insights.
Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
Nichols, aye? We're just placing it, not even.
Still placing it.
Now they, now they are arguing amongst themselves.
I make a motion that the Finance Board recommends favorably on Article twenty-five as written and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Pete? Kay, Tommy?
Rashala, aye.
Oda.
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
I make a motion that the Select Board recommend favorably Article twenty-five as written.
Do a second.
Waitman, seconds.
Roll call.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, I just quickly wanted to say thanks to Joe. I feel like water and sewer is constantly under a, a tight microscope, and, and in some cases rightfully so, and I think in some cases, it might feel, um, a little bit unwarranted. And I appreciate all the work, Joe, that you've been doing to kind of get us, um, to a better place, although the cost, I think, everybody is what is most concerned about, but that's, I mean, the cost of doing business. So I just wanted to say thank you for the work and the explanations that you provide to all of us.
I, I, can I just say something too? I'm just, I don't ask, I'm doing nothing against Joe. I think he's doing a, a wonderful job there. I just wanted, I have questions, I want answers, and I want to.
You can ask anytime. That's what we're here for.
I don't think anyone's objected to that, Tom.
No, I'm just.
Yep, so it is, all questions are good questions, and we're happy to hear them. And believe, we could make mistakes if we wanna hear questions, so.
Benoit, aye?
Let's move it along. Come on, Leah.
Waitman, aye. I saw we already did this, sorry.
Nichols, now.
We're all getting tired.
What are they doing? Oh.
We placed it, right?
Do you need a motion to move it, or to support it?
I, um, I make a motion to place Article twenty-six, a citizen's petition.
Did the Finance Committee vote favorably on that twenty-five? They did.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we do.
I guess I'm, I'm getting tired.
To see if the town will vote to approve for, from available funds, including free cash, the sum of eight hundred, um, excuse me, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-one cents to fund town services and supplies, vendors, and other necessary materials, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any action there, in relation thereto.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Just so you know, if we stay with the seven hundred thousand dollars of free cash, we only have sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents available.
We, we're gonna have, but that's okay.
Before this.
The, the, first, let me, let me make some comments about this, first of all, right? So the attorney, when reviewing these articles, had a lot of problems with this particular article, the way it was drafted. So it's drafted poorly, and the, the, the question of who makes a motion to approve this is, is kind of open in the air, right? But the, you'll see, if you look at the, uh, motions article, that the attorney drafted up some correct motions if they, in fact, we do wanna move forward with this. Because this really doesn't decide where the money comes from, if it comes specifically from free cash, uh, and then how it gets funded into our budget. It, it's just very confusing. The attorney was struggling with it, so. Depending upon how all this plays out with the, with the committee, and if we get state money and everything else or not, I'm gonna have to work with them to make sure that the motion they present is legally correct when we get to it, just so you understand. That's why, if you see, the lawyer put out a couple of different options for, for how to move forward with this, but, you know, I.
Why are we paying for legal to go through this? This is a citizen's petition.
Well, again, the question here is, if they're looking, what they did is, sort of interesting. Sheila and others, I think, called my department, and started asking what potential costs were gonna be, and they figured out costs for, you know, fixing the playground, which I kind of think is not part of, shouldn't be part of this, but they also got a cost for private duty officers and all that kind of stuff. They also understood that, you remember when we went through the liquor permits for, uh, having like, um, the, uh, fire department do liquor stuff, that we had to have insurance, but we went through that issue, so. So they guessed at some insurance company. They kind of tried to do the best they could to come up with numbers that they thought they would need. I think personally, they're too high, but then you, you also gotta remember, they also added twenty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars to simply match money that the Fourth of July Committee is raising. So, you know, they, they did a lot of things here. I, I said to you earlier on, I don't support this much. I think it's too much. I thought the thirty thousand was the appropriate number. I don't know what's gonna happen with the state, or how much money they're gonna raise, or do any of this stuff, so. I, I originally said that I would suggest for me that you not recommend this, but I think the better position at this point is to take no recommendation until we know more about this article, because I, I know that Sheila did say, and I wanna be very clear and all honest to her, when she brought this forward and she sent the note out, she made it very clear that the committee was willing to work with the town on this motion and make changes and all that stuff. So I don't know what to make of this. There's a lot of problems. If we decide to give any additional money, then the thirty grand, we need to, to work with them and figure it out, so.
The question, you don't, why would you vote to place, you have to put the article on.
Right, we have to, well, we have to place it, so we have, but we still, we still vote on every article. We still need.
Well, no, you, yeah, but it has to be on the warrant.
And it has to be written on the warrant the way they gave it to me.
Correct.
Right, so we're, we're just placing it right now, which we are required to place it, so we're voting on placing it.
But I think there's gotta be a lot more discussion on this particular article.
So.
I don't wanna, again, I'm not asking anybody to vote down the article.
So this is for placing the article. Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye? Now it's for you guys to argue about. Good recommendations for the Finance Committee.
Check it out until we know what free cash is.
Yeah.
Because we don't know what free cash is.
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
Oh, we're already putting thirty grand.
I would just suggest that, yeah, thirty, take thirty out of it. I know it's not a lot, but you.
Well, we already did that in a separate.
The insurance, the insurance coverage, they, the town made Lilac Hedge and Seven Saws and Milgram all provide that insurance coverage, so why isn't the three hundredth committee expecting the same thing?
Because unlike those organizations, the three hundredth committee and the, um, and the Fourth of July Committee are parts of the town, they're.
The town committees, yeah.
But they're gonna be serving their own alcohol?
I don't even know what the four thousand insurance is for. They wrote it in the article, they didn't check with me on that, so I don't know what their intent of the insurance was. I think in general insurance, because it's a town to me and stuff, you know, we have property damage for general stuff, so I'm not worried about that. But I don't know what events they're talking about, if it's liquor, what they're, I have no idea. I don't know what they're thinking. This is their explanation for why they're coming up with the number. Uh, it wasn't discussed with me, but it was discussed around our minutes, because when I saw this, they said, where'd these numbers come from? And I called Joe, and I called the police chief, and they said, oh, yeah, we talked to them. They asked me what it thought, and we gave them some guesses. That's what, that's what most.
That's human left.
The twenty-four thousand dollars for landscaping.
No, that's not the landscaping.
DPW landscape parks and recreation costs, including inspections, equipment, repairs, and services, twenty-four thousand dollars, for you.
Playground, right? What's that twenty-four grand for yours? Did you give her, I know the playground was one of the things, one of the facts. What else is that twenty-four grand?
The youth forest center. For a fraction of a.
I don't remember everything. I, I know we wanted the playground inspected and, and repairs made that needed. And then we just, the rest of it was cleaning up the common and, and the grounds and all that, because, again, we don't really have those people right now.
No, I get it.
Yeah. Again, I, I don't think we have enough information to do a lot with this one. They tried to give information, so I don't want, I'm not trying to be negative, but I think we got a work to do here.
In a perfect world, the stuff she asked for is stuff we would normally do in any.
Part of their budget, right?
No, and, and I agree, but.
It's just, we cut, we cut that, so.
We didn't have the money.
That's all it is.
So. This committee is.
Can you make the motion to table this until we know what free cash is?
We have to place it.
We got the eighteenth.
Save it, please.
Oh, you mean in terms of the recommendation.
Are we gonna meet again before the eighteenth, or are we gonna meet before that meeting?
Yeah, we'll figure that all out. We gotta wait.
So can we have them come in and talk to us?
Sure, I suppose.
I'm usually, I don't feel I wanna make the recommendations either.
Well, the thing is, is right now, if free cash is at seven hundred, we don't have enough to pay the.
So choose the.
But I know, but you told me seven hundred. I gotta start with what you told.
So that's fine.
So you could do no action. It's on the, it's on the.
Yeah, I know, but.
It's an article on the board. It's, you could take no action, and let the town decide.
Motion to take no action.
I think that's appropriate.
Good? Any second?
I'll second.
There you go.
Kay?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your second.
I did.
Any discussion? Pete? Okay?
Roll call.
Roll call. But no action is, Rashala, aye.
Oda.
Mo, uh, Winica.
Narwhal, aye.
Um, I would like to make a motion that the Select Board recommend no action on Article twenty-six.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Roll call.
Benoit, aye?
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye?
Just wanna thank everybody. Great job tonight, and, you know, I think we're making real progress to do some serious repairs of the building, and that's great.
Good job. Thank you. So can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Do I have a second?
Waitman, seconds. Waitman, seconds. I just also quickly wanted to just say thank you to, to Ron and all the staff and department heads and committees and everybody that's, that's doing this, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
But vote the Finance Committee.
Yeah, the Finance Committee.
Okay, roll call.
Waitman, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye, now.
Kay, second?
Second.
Kay.
Third.
Pete?
Good to meet them. Good luck with those messes.
Good night.
Rashala, aye.
Oda.
Winica, aye.
Narwhal, aye.
Done.